All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You can find a seat. We'd like to get started. Okay, the City Council is reconvening from closed session. And to report, we have a vote of five zero. The City Council authorized the city attorney's office to initiate litigation in one matter. The names of the defendants and details are not subject to disclosure at this time. Once litigation is filed, that information will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. I'd like to adjourn the closed session at six eleven and like to call the regular City Council meeting to order on Wednesday, August of twenty eighth at six eleven P. M. Mr. Clerk, if you could read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, August thirtieth at one P. M. and Monday, September second at six P. M. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentations to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number twenty ten dash two four, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the council for more than three minutes. The speaker timer on the podium counts down the individual speaker time remaining and will turn yellow after the first two minutes have passed, indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card. Those are the blue cards that can be found at the back of the chamber and provide them to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Winn?
Here.
Councilmember Detrick?
Here.
Councilmember Suen?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
I am here. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance. In honor of our chief, this is his last meeting, I'd like to ask you to lead us in the pledge. Chief Noblet?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you, Chief. Next item is moment of silence. The City Council, during every regular City Council meeting, would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. So if you could, please, join the council. Thank you very much. Next item.
Take us to Section Two, Approval of the Agenda.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? All right, next item.
That'll take us to Section Three, though we have no closed-session items for that section, so we'll advance to Section Four, Presentations and Announcements, starting with item four point one, which is a proclamation recognizing September twenty nineteen as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And if I could ask Mr. Raleigh Swingle to come up to the speaker podium.
I'm back.
(audience applauding)
You're gonna have to listen for a while. You know what? Let's present this and then how about if you make your comments after?
All right, I can do that.
All right. It's always a pleasure to see you. We only get to see you once a year, but every year that we do get to see is another year that you've beat back prostate cancer, so happy to do that. We're happy to have this proclamation declaring Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, September of twenty nineteen. I won't read all the whereas', but I'm gonna hit the important thing, which is just shy of twenty-five thousand men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and estimated just under five thousand of those men will die from this disease. However, the five-year survival rate approaches one hundred percent when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but it drops to only thirty percent when it spreads to the other part of the body. So the long and the short of it is, it's discoverable, it's treatable, it's testable to find out whether or not you have it, and so get out there and do that. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaim September twenty nineteen as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Elk Grove, and ask the community to increase awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decision with their health care provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer. I am asked to give out this proclamation every year because unfortunately my father-in-law lost his battle with prostate cancer. Yes, thank you for remembering that. Anyway, there's the proclamation, sir, and we would be happy to hear from you and we are always happy to see you.
It's my pleasure. So that you'll know, this proclamation, as many other from around the area where we have men going out to councils and county groups, they all go back to Washington, D.C., to our congresspeople, so that they will have ammunition to go for more research dollars. And I'm a testimony of that, that if there was not research on prostate cancer, I would not be here today. I'm a great example of what research has been able to do. So, anyway, you've covered part of what I was gonna cover, and that makes me feel good. I don't have to do it now. What I'm gonna do is, can I give you a little history about mine? I think it's important.
Please.
I was diagnosed in January of two thousand and four with stage four metastatic castrate-resistant prostate cancer. What that means is, I had stage four, and most people understand what that is, it's aggressive, but mine had already spread to my spine, my ribs, and my pelvis. My prognosis was not good, and I only had two options. One was no treatment, and my oncologist said maybe I would live eighteen months. The other was get involved with UC Davis Comprehensive Cancer Center, and he said, "I know I can get you ten more years. I can't promise you twenty." In January, it'll be sixteen years. I've been on eight different treatment programs: standard treatment, clinical trials, research programs, chemotherapy, immunotherapy. And this morning, I started my ninth treatment. And I will be going on a program called radium two twenty-three, which is a radioisotope that they infused into a vein in my hand this morning. And it's a drug that will go to the bones where my cancer is and will stop the cancer from growing, hopefully. It's a very new program. That's kind of my history, and I would just wanna thank you for letting me come here every year. It's been four years, and I'm aiming for twenty, so I gotta...[471.03][471.03](applause) And I will, I will take this back. I get a little emotional, I can't help it, but I'll take this back to our advisors, and those will all be packaged up. We'll probably have several hundred of them from the Sacramento area, northern California. So, thank you, and I look forward to seeing you next year.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Raleigh.[498.62][498.62](applause)
All right, next presentation.
Take us to item four point two, which is a proclamation declaring September eighth, twenty nineteen, as Elk Grove and confirming International Literacy Day. If I can invite members of the audience that are from our, that are representing the Sacramento Public Library Foundation, if you can come up.
Yeah, Elvia, Rachel, Robert, and Chris.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Rachel.
Thank you all for being here from the foundation. As Chair of the Sacramento Public Library Authority, serving and representing the city along with Councilmember Winn, we're appreciate, we appreciate you coming down here to receive this this evening. You know, it's September, schools are almost September, school's back in session, at least for my kids, and just want to recognize the importance of literacy in our community. Three out of five children in the Sacramento County aren't reading at grade level, and as a parent whose own child, one of his own child, children had that struggle as well, I fully appreciate the need for having our kids read at grade level. So, September is National Reading Month, and September eighth is International Literacy Day. Again, thank you for being here. We wanna just take a moment to resolve that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaim September eighth as Elk Grove Literacy Day, and urges Elk Grove residents and civic organizations to read, donate time and resources, and volunteer to create a culture of literacy for all members of the community. So, thank you very much. I'm gonna invite the rest of my councilmembers. You guys want to come down, take a quick picture? I think, you know, it's important, we've got, Mayor Lee was once a school board member, Vice Mayor Hume is a big supporter of Authors on the Move from the foundation, as you know, and I know Councilmember Detrick reads a lot of stories to his grandkids.
And Darren Suen tells a lot of stories.
I can't, yeah, I haven't learned to read yet, though.
(inaudible).
Oh, you got it? There we go. There we go.
Okay, everybody, ready? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, if that's okay. I'll wait till everyone gets back to their seats. Thank you so much, Councilmember Suen. That was wonderful dedication. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Rachel Minnick. I'm the Executive Director of Reading Partners Sacramento, and I'm proud to stand here today with some community members who will be saying a few words. Elvia will in just a moment, but I did just wanna introduce who's here tonight. We have Chris Johnson. He's a financial advisor here in Elk Grove, so come by and see him later. We have Rob Honaker, who is a new board member for the Sacramento Public Library Foundation. Then we have Michael Minnick, who is a professor of early childhood education at Los Rios Community Colleges and Board Trustee for Sacramento City Unified School District, and yes, a relation to Rachel Minnick. And then last, I want to introduce Elvia Ramirez. She is a professor of Ethnic Studies at Sacramento State University, and she'll share a little bit more about the group that's working on literacy in Sacramento.
Thank you. Okay, so on March third, two thousand and nineteen, a group of thirty or so Sacramento County citizens came together to talk about creating a children's literacy movement in Sacramento County. In the room were literacy providers, the library, educators from elementary schools and high schools, Sacramento State, corporate and individual philanthropists, and also policymakers. Today we ask that all policymakers be aware that our children need to be able to read. After years of effort, Sacramento literacy rates are on the rise, and while the gains are good, they're not enough. Reading is the gateway to becoming a productive and engaged member of a society that votes. You must be able to read to vote. And so by establishing September eighth as Elk Grove Literacy Day, we line up with International Literacy Day, which is appropriate for the internationally diverse place that Elk Grove is today, and we create an opportunity for everyone to focus on this problem. So along with the City of Elk Grove's proclamation made today, Sacramento County, as well as the cities of Rancho Cordova, Citrus Heights, and Sacramento are all making the same proclamation. This is the beginning of everyone realizing that reading is critical to a healthy, productive, and equitable society. Thank you.[818.94][818.94](applause)
Thanks again, everybody.
All right, next item.
Take us to Section Five, Public Comment. Members of the audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items as raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and I wanna highlight what's real important here. You're more than welcome to come and make a comment, but make sure your comments are not related to the agenda. If it is, I'm gonna ask you to sit down. We need to get through as many people as possible, so with all due respect, I wanna make sure that we're consistent with the Brown Act. First speaker that we have lined up is Constance Connolly. Following Constance Connolly is Stacy Anderson.
Good evening. I couldn't make the special meeting because I had a meeting of my own up in Roseville. If you ever try to get back from, to Elk Grove from Roseville, from rush hour, there's no rushing. You sit in traffic for at least two hours. In retrospect, after watching the meeting tape and then focusing on the videos that Elk Grove News published, I wanna comment on two items. Does this council realize you could potentially put small minority enterprises out of business? And Mayor Lee, I would like to caution you when you cut off the woman who tried to speak at the very end. A lot of people that live in Elk Grove now are not, were not born in the United States. A lot of people come from countries that if you speak out against the government, you could get a knock at your door, be taken away, never to be seen again. Isn't that true, Stephanie? I don't know if this woman was born in the United States, but by her accent, I'm venturing to guess she was not. She told you that she did not wanna, had no intention of speaking, but after listening to her fellow citizens, I think she found the courage to speak, and I think she should have been given at least the opportunity to have at least a minute or two, because a lot of people come here for the very first time. They make the time to drive down here to address their government, which is our right. And a lot of people are afraid to do that. They come up here and tell you, "This is my first time here, and I'm very nervous." Your job is to make them feel comfortable when they are standing at this podium, especially when they're here for the first time. Those of us in Citizens Corner used to hear from people that would come up and speak, and they would be ignored, or they weren't given the attention they deserve. They would say to Lynn Wheat, myself, and several others, "I'll never be back." And I don't really believe that's what you want. I really think you want a government where the people of this city participate. And my second point is that CNU's so-called nonprofit appears to have no revenue or assets. Would any of us, and those of us who moved to Elk Grove because we came here for the American dream, would any of us get a loan if our balance sheets and our financial statements showed no assets or no revenue? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connolly. Next speaker, Stacy Anderson. Ms. Connolly, I do appreciate the comment, and, you know, with all due respect, I did realize that she wasn't familiar with the process, so the clerk and I did have a conversation with her. But for anyone who's in the room, if you wanna speak, please do speak, and there's a period of time for that. But what makes it difficult for me convening this meeting is, once I close public comment, and if somebody wanted to speak, once I open the floodgates, then there'll be other people who wanna speak. So, see, from my perspective, it's, there's no ill intent in that. I wanted to, I want the members of the public to engage in this process, and so, you know, of all people I know, I'm a product of the Vietnam War, so I understand what it means to suppress, to be suppressed. So, with all due respect, that was the intent, and I do appreciate Ms. Connolly for providing the input. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to address some things that happened at the public meeting last week, particularly because CNU was invited to have their representatives come up and rebut some things that were made, statements that were made by the community. First of all, I'll get to it. Mr. Holloway said that CNU was gonna be meeting with the Board of the Stone Lake Homeowners Association, and as of today, two board members, including the president, have confirmed he nor anybody from CNU has ever reached out to the Homeowners Association, the Board, or even our management company, First Residential. As a matter of fact, the manager of our management company, Jacqueline Gomez, is more than happy for me to give you her phone number so you can actually speak with her and confirm this. They have never reached out at all to anybody in the Stone Lake residential community, or the Board, or the management company. He also stated that CNU was actively trying to work with the small business tenants of Stone Lake Landing to come to a mutually beneficial resolution. Yet when the owner of Results Transformation Center stood up, and granted, it was out of his turn, stood up and tried to say, "This is not true," Mr. Holloway didn't even recognize him. How can you say that you're working with the owners of these small businesses and not even recognize one of the owners of the largest business in Stone Lake Landing? It's unbelievable. Also, either, I can't remember who it was. It was either Mr. Holloway or Mr. Lee at one point stated that the business owners were being difficult to work with, and had even said that some of them had stopped paying their rents. And this is where I would like to share a private conversation I had with one of the business owners months ago. I walked in and I asked this owner, "How are things going?" And this owner told me that, at the time, I believe it was Paul Wagstaff, who was managing the finances, stopped coming by to collect rents. So this business owner went over to CNU to give them the rent check, and they said, "No, don't worry about it. We're not, we're not worried about it." Are they being set up at this point to look hostile by being told, "Don't worry about giving us the rent check. And if you'd like, in private, I'd be more than happy to give you this business owner's location to confirm that." Ultimately, Mr. Holloway and Mr. Lee were afforded the opportunity to return to the podium after their three-minute presentations. I urge you to allow business owners to have that same voice. They can't get up here like everybody else can because they're trying to feed their families and run their businesses, and they don't have the money to hire these big guns, or figureheads, or former public servants to state their claim. Please, they are the foundation of our community. They deserve the respect just as much as anybody else. Thank you.
So, Ms. Anderson, I do appreciate that. If you, if you can get the telephone number to the clerk?
Absolutely.
I would love to make sure that they do connect.
Fantastic.
And I meant what I said, you know, there are serious concerns if, I'm hearing, that they're not reaching out. And so if that is the case, you know, I certainly, you know, want them to know that I'm watching.
Okay.
The other thing is, in regards to the last meeting, the Tupper hearing, the reason why that was permitted is because whenever members of the council have questions to, you know, any particular individuals, you've seen that before, where I'll call the person back up. So it wasn't to give them an opportunity to rebut, but members of this council may have direct question, that's the reason why. So, thank you.
I guess I just wish that the business center would have been afforded that as well, because the stories are so conflicting right now that it'd be good to see both sides, I think.
Yeah, in the event that councilmembers did have questions, specifically to members of the business community that were participating in that hearing, I would have allowed that as well. So, honestly, what...
In the future, if we should have another meeting about this, could I ask each of you to maybe think of a question that you could ask, ask the small business people so they do have that opportunity?
I think that's fair, right?
Okay.
I mean, if you ask one question, ask it to the other side. Okay, fine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And who am I giving the phone number to?
Give it to Madam Clerk, yeah. Gregory Waldron. Following Gregory is Mark Graham.
My name is Gregory Waldron. I live on nine eight zero one amenity circle, and I was, came here for a different reason, but when I saw that on the agenda was about prostate cancer, it got important to me. I believe in our bed. And I was diagnosed three years ago with prostate cancer. Got together with some of my old troops. Two of my troops have died from prostate cancer. A third is fighting for his life. And fortunately, I was smart enough and to get treatment. I went through two different doctors, and they said my prostate cancer was not aggressive. I went to a third, and he said it was, and when they, when I went through surgery, I had my entire prostate removed, it was aggressive. And there's things that doctors and the media do not tell you about prostate cancer, and I would like to make them aware, anybody that has prostate cancer, or thinks they have, wants to know about it, 'cause, well, only fifty percent of the population has it, because only males have prostate. But I would, I will make it aware to my city councilmen, my phone number, and my email address if anybody wants to address this issue. Number two, the reason why I came here is because Elk Grove has hired, I guess, a company to, that has goats that eat the vegetation, that are going out there and having guys with weed eaters and weed killers and stuff like that. Well, down the street from me, the last week, there was a fifth-wheel trailer sitting there. I'm not sure how legal all this stuff is. They had tied into the fire hydrant for water. They had gas cans outside the fifth-wheel and a generator going, so people were living in this fifth-wheel. And one, Monday, I was leaving my property, and three teenage boys saw a dog across at the ravine down the street from me on Emerald Park, and they were concerned about his welfare because it was a hundred degrees up. Well, I brought the dog water, and they carried the dog off for, for help. I knocked on the fifth-wheel trailer door, and a guy came to the door. He did not talk English. I said, I said something like, I pulled out my driver's license, "Verde de cag, verde de cag. No speak English."
Thank you, sir.
I don't even think he was eighteen years old.
Your time is expired. Thank you, sir. Your time is expired. Appreciate it.
And I believe that we have illegals, our city council is hiring illegals to, or somehow in the process, there are illegals in our system.
So, this is what I'm gonna do, sir. I tell you what, why don't you, why don't you do me a favor, have a conversation with Mr. Murdoch? I think there are particular things with, with goat herding, and from what you're describing, my guess is the dogs are to protect the goats. I don't know. But, Mr. Murdoch, can you have a conversation with him? Maybe you can explain the details of all the paperwork that's required so that there's some clarity? So, thank you so much. Thank you for your service, and thank you for coming tonight. All right, our next speaker is Mr. Graham. Following Mr. Mark Graham is Daisy Hugh.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Graham. I live in Elk Grove. I also want, first I wanna say, I really appreciated the meetings that we held with each councilmember. Those were just fantastically interactive, and we got to know what you think about this issue, and share some of our views in depth, and got to hear our response, so thank you so much for all those. I sent you each an email around five oh five this afternoon, which contained one PDF attachment, and I don't know if you have the ability to open that file on your computers, but I'm going to refer to it later when I do public comments on the agenda item nine point three. That was basically, this file here, it's twenty pages, but it's application content requirements from other cities. And so I'm gonna compare what's in the proposed zoning code amendment, which is very, very brief in terms of application content requirements to what other cities have.
So, Mr. Graham? With all due respect, it sounds like this is an item that's on the agenda tonight.
Well, all right.
So, if you could speak on the issues that are not on the agenda item, not an agendized item, that would make my life easier.
All right. I do wanna make everybody's life easier.
Thank you.
Up there, anyway. But the simple request is if you could open the file so that later on you'll have it open. All right, I agree with what Connie Connolly said about making this public comments a comfortable and safe place to speak, and of course, Mayor, I also agree with you, there is a process, and once you close public comments, they're over. So, it's good that everybody, it's good to let everybody know what the process is. Now, on the application, now, let's talk about this. I sent an email a few weeks ago encouraging you to pass a cellphone right-to-know ordinance. Cellphone right-to-know ordinance, and this could be modeled, it could be the exact same thing as what the City of Berkeley passed, and this was about twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen. It essentially required the retailers to post in their store and also give to each purchaser of a cellphone a notice that has to do with what the user needs to know in terms of using their phone so that they don't get exposed to more radiation than the Federal Communications Commission, you know, limits. And it's really referring to the instructions that are found in the user's manual for the cellphones. So, it's all about right to know. People should know about the radiation, and to protect themselves, to be able to use ... their phone so that they don't get exposed to more radiation than the Federal Communications Commission, you know, limits. And it's really referring to the instructions that are found in the user's manual for the cellphones. So it's all about right-to-know. People should know about the radiation and to protect themselves, to be able to use their cellphone in a safe manner. The reason it would be a fairly easy thing for you to do is that all the legal battles have been done because the CTIA, the big lobbying group that represents Verizon, AT&amp;C, and so on, they sued the City of Berkeley, and it ran its course all the way up, I think, through the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. It, I don't think it made it to the U.S. Supreme Court, and the answer was, yes, the city does have the power to do it exactly the way they did it. And I think it was a really brief ordinance, too. It was something like two pages long. So, I would encourage you to pass a cellphone right-to-know ordinance, and we could all be a safer city and have more intelligent use of our smartphones. That's all. I will have more to say on Agenda Item 9.3, and I yield back the balance of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. And as a reminder, there's no yielding back the remainder of your time because everyone's allotted three minutes, so, you know, there's already clarity in a resolution that's been passed by council. Daisy Hugh.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Daisy Hughes, and I live in Elk Grove. One week ago, the council voted to say yes to the CNU hospital and allow that process to move forward when I and other citizens urged the council to postpone that hearing and vote. I am again asking for the council to pause, this time regarding the cell antenna policy. There are significant differences between last week's vote to move forward regarding the CNU hospital and today's vote on the cell antenna policy that make postponing this vote for a month even more critical. I am asking the council to give direction to the staff and bring this issue back revised per that direction from the council in one month. Why does this make sense? The vote on the hospital was not the city's approval of the project. The vote on the proposed code amendment and MLA would be. The hospital vote, according to the council's rationale, just allowed the process to move forward. However, a vote on the zoning proposed code amendment would change our municipal code. It would be the final step. There are several more steps for the hospital, and any one of them could stop the project. Those include environmental review, public or private financing, and the city's approval, which could happen later. Amending the zoning code for cell antennas will be a big mistake if the city rushes and does not fully protect its interests and the residents' interests, and if the city doesn't fully exercise its regulatory power. The hospital is not a city project. The cell antenna policy is. The staff report is seventy-one pages long-
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if you can keep your comments about items that are not on the agenda, otherwise, I'm going to have to ask you to wait till the item comes up.
I understand.
So it's fine if you talk about CNU and the TEFRA hearing, that's fine. Please continue.
And you and the public have only had that report for three business days. The council has never had a discussion on the proposed code amendment. The city doesn't have any responsibility for the construction, operation, or ownership of the hospital, but it does have responsibility to protect the city's interests and the residents' interests regarding cell antenna health effects and aesthetics. We are talking about city property, light poles, and the public right of way over which the city retains zoning authority. You have received specific recommendations from Elk Grove residents on how you can limit the number of cell antennas and otherwise improve on the proposed code amendment. The city needs time to evaluate those, both the council and the staff. For all of these reasons, I urge the council to give direction to the staff tonight and bring the issue back in one month revised per the council's direction for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. But, you know, I'm, for clarity, maybe, Mr. Clerk or Mr. City Attorney, can you clarify what the TEFRA hearing was, again? Because I think there's some misinformation here from the speaker.
So the, yeah, sure, I'll try. So the TEFRA hearing was not an approval of the project. The last speaker was correct about that. It was not an issuance of bonds by the city council. It was not an obligation to repay any kind of bonds by the city council. What it was, was an authorization by the city council to allow CNU to seek tax-exempt bond financing through other sources, and that's a requirement under the IRS regulations. But it was not an obligation on the city.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Christine Snyder.
Hello, Council. I'm Christina Snyder with TRI Commercial. I'm the one that was brought up last, or two weeks ago regarding the broker that represents seven tenants. That would be me. So I want to make sure that I'm the face, even though nobody named me. So years ago, I was brought on to this project when I worked for Ethan Conrad. I probably did nine or ten leases when I was trying to basically save this project that was vacant. There was nothing going on over here, and there was no pulse. I worked with Daryl Dome and tried to get life going into this property and bring it to where there was a community. I worked hard to bring these tenants in here, and if anybody doesn't know or understand what it takes to be a small business owner, I'm happy to fill you in at another time. So I just want to come forward and tell you guys that I've been working diligently with these tenants since I got a call from Flaming Grill back in January when all this hit the news media and when their businesses started taking a hit because of all this media attention, and nobody talked to them from the hospitals. I've been in contact with the hospital for months. I've sent them termination agreements. I've sent them potential relocations, had relocation setup for every single one of these tenants. I've even had a tenant that just wanted to walk away, and they said, "You know what? She walks away, they're just going to come after her, and they're going to seek money." And then they went silent on me. They've been ghosting me. So this whole thing about, "Hey, we're here for the tenants, and we're trying to help the tenants," is a flat-out lie. I have documentation on all of it. I'm happy to bring in every single email to you guys and let you know that this is not true. And I would be concerned because, to me, for somebody to come up here and blatantly lie to city council and everybody in here and these tenants and try and portray themselves as, "Hey, we're trying to do the right thing," they have not. And I'm going to tell you, I'm going to stand in the truth, and I'm going to stand in the light. I have a reputation around town. You can call anybody out there in the community, and my word is my bond. So I want you guys to be aware of that. I tried to do something right for Elk Grove, and to turn around and see that these tenants are being taken advantage of, this is their livelihood. This is how they pay their bills, pay their rent, pay for their child to go to school, you take care of their parents. And to see these people that have put everything into these businesses and to have total disregard for that and just get thrown under the bus because he has, he is adamant, Mike is adamant, for making sure that these people go out of business and they don't have to drop a dime. And yet, they're here asking for $900 million, and he's going to sit in here and balk for the fact of a relocation cost. So I suggest that you guys table this whole thing and come back to it maybe in a month when we can reevaluate the whole situation. That's all I've got for you for today, but I will be breaking down a timeline of everything that's going on because I want you to be educated when you make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Snyder? Ms. Snyder? Ms. Snyder?
Would you please, would you please leave your contact information? Oh, we have an email. Okay, never mind. I'd like to reach out and speak with you, please.
Oh, I've sent you guys all an email, but I'm happy to. I'll give you my cellphone. You can call me anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing that there are no additional speaker, let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I do to the full agenda, I'll try to keep this brief. Elk Grove Police Department, in partnership with the Special Olympics, Northern California, Nevada, and the Texas Roadhouse, raised over thirty, forty-three hundred through the Special Olympics Tippecop event last Wednesday. Law enforcement officers served free lunches to raise funds and collect donations for Special Olympic athletes. Speaking of law enforcement officers, Captain Tim Albright will be sworn into the city's next police of chief in a ceremony on Tuesday, September 3, at Creekside Church at 4:00 P.M. The event is open to the public. The Youth Commission will host the Fourth Annual Party on the Palms Fest on Saturday, September 7, from 6:00 to 9:00 in front of City Hall. This teens event only, is free for all students ages thirteen to eighteen with a valid ID, student ID. The event will feature live DJ music, a social media lounge, foam dance party, a gaming truck, and more. Details are available on the city's website. The Public Works Department will host a community workshop to review the Civic Center's nature, area design, development drawings on Monday, September 9, at the Aquatic Center's captain's quarters at 6:00 P.M. This meeting will offer the community a chance to provide input on the design of the playground and workout areas planned for the space, as well as ask questions about the project. Please visit the city's website, the city's Facebook event page for the details on this event. The Sacramento Area Council of Governments, ACOG, recently awarded the city three million to implement the Elk Grove Floren Road Complete Street and Resurfacing Project. This project will provide pavement resurfacing, closed sidewalk gaps, upgrade ADA curb ramps, add Class II and Class III bike lanes, and improve existing traffic signal equipment. The project will extend improvements in the works for additional segments of Elk Grove Floren Road further south. All combined, these improvements will offer smoother and safer travel for cars, bikes, and pedestrians along this four-and-a-half-mile stretch of road within the next five years. I'd like to take this time to acknowledge some of our hard work the several of city staff and departments have recognized recently by regional and industry organizations. The International City/County Management Association, better known as ICMA, is awarding the city a certificate of achievement for its Performance Measure Program. The Elk Grove, Elk Grove is among seventeen jurisdictions receiving this certificate nationally. This is the third time the Performance Measure Program has been recognized by the ICMA with this honor. I'd like to congratulate Shay and his group for this honor. The city has received achievement, a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for its comprehensive annual financial report, better known as the CAFER, and an award for outstanding achievement in popular financial reporting for its popular finance, annual financial report, the PAFER. Both reports provided information for the fiscal year ending in June 30, 2018. The city has received the CAFER award for seventeen consecutive years. The PAFER award has been received every year for the past eleven years. I'd like to congratulate Brad and his team on those continuous awards. The city was, was recognized in the 2019 Best of California Awards for Best IT Collaboration Among Organizations by the Center of Digital Government. The Homeless Activity Reporter Web Application is an online mapping tool created by the city's GIS and PD staff that enables police officers, code enforcement officers, nonprofit volunteers, and other city staff to efficiently collect, organize, and analyze current data on the Elk Grove's homeless population. This online tool allows service providers to coordinate their activities and amplify and reach the impacts of services for people who need them. I'd like to congratulate Nicole and the PD for this award. Lastly, the Sacramento Business Journal has recognized the Elk Grove Aquatic Center as one of the best real estate projects of the year. The award honors the highest-impact real estate projects of the past twelve months and the companies that made it happen. The award will be presented at a ceremony on September 20, so I'd like to congratulate Bob and his team on that award. And finally, in accordance with the city holidays, City Hall will be closed on Monday, September 2, and observance of Labor Day. That includes the, concludes the city manager report. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Are there any questions? There are no questions. Thank you. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 7, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Okay, let's start off with Councilmember Detrick.
Well, this past weekend, we had the Multicultural Festival, another phenomenal event and turnout. Our city team, along with the commission, did a fabulous job putting it together for the eighth annual event. And I just want to take a moment to, not many people remember Newton Ekpo, but Newton was the visionary for the multicultural event, and he's passed away as, right after he was the first-appointed commissioner back in 2011. And that vision that he had to unify the community that has blossomed into an event where 10,000 people come and all the different beautiful people of Elk Grove with all their diverse backgrounds come together to celebrate and educate those differences. So that was a phenomenal event, and wanted to congratulate Captain Tim Albright, who will be our incoming police chief. And then tomorrow will be the, I guess, is the grand finale for Chief Noblet, who's done a phenomenal job, and Chief, I can't thank you enough for your years of service, your last several years as our police chief, and then the friendship that we've developed, and I look forward to that friendship continuing. In fact, I hope to retire and be alongside you at some point. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Detrick. Councilmember Huen.
Thank you, sir. I see Director Fuentes is out there, and just wanted to update that he and I both serve on the Regional Diversity Group where we work with the Fire Department on efforts in diversifying the Fire Department. And I was able to, I had the opportunity to present our program that we talked about where we can diversify, assist community-based organizations, assist the Fire Department in running a program that would help diversify the Fire Department. So I had the opportunity to speak at the County Fire Chiefs Meeting, and it went really well, and I'm proud to say that we've got their support in it and that we will start 2020, and it's going to be called Footsteps to Fire. It's going to be a six-week program where we will work alongside with organizations like Urban League and La Familia in recruitment efforts. So thank you, Director Fuentes, for working with me on that. I also attended, India Association of Sacramento held a Women's Empowerment Panel where I was very fortunate to be able to serve on that panel with Ms. Linda White, who is no stranger to us here in Elk Grove. We spoke with a lot of women from the Indian community, Indian Association community about being empowered and being in a leadership position as a woman. Attended the Capitol Meeting where we had the opportunity to meet Ms. Theodore Yu, who I'd like to say took the place of Steve Magnini, who'd worked for the Sacramento Bee for many years and wrote great human interest stories. So she's going to be taking on that role. And then also, the CEO of RT Henry Lee was there to give an update about regional transit as well. Last night, I attended OCA's Legislative Reception where we were able to hear for the first time the individual that worked the Speak and Lead, the individual that won the Speak and Lead Contest. Like to acknowledge my two staff members, Wilton and Jase, who for six weeks on Sundays for four hours worked with over thirty young participants on helping them to develop speaking skills, public speaking skills, and they were amazing, and we had the opportunity to have our councilmembers soon speak with these, this young group of future leaders as well, too. And then lastly, I want to thank the chief. Thank you, chief, for your outstanding service to our community. Everybody that I've spoken to in every community has said nothing but amazing things about you and the work that you do, and we're very lucky to have you. I was very lucky to be a part of the family. As you know, my husband works for the Police Department, and he's got nothing but amazing things to say about you, so it's a loss for us. But, but we are going to gain Captain Tim Albright, who I believe to be amazing as well, too, and to follow into your footsteps. So thank you, sir. Do I have?
All right, thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll, I'll start off where Councilmember Huen left off. I also want to thank Chief Noblet for all the work you've done for this department. You've, you've left it in much better shape than when you got it, I felt. It was always, it was always good, but I think, you know, your belief in continuous improvement and the things that you've done in terms of community engagement with our officers and increasing the diversity amongst our officers so our officers look more like the community they represent. I think all of that is a testament to what you've done, and even your willingness to, you know, engage your, people that might have been skeptic of you and put them on your chief advisory board. So I think that's a real testament to your courage and bravery of your, bravery of your leadership. I also want to thank, or congratulate Captain Albright. We look forward to him continuing the mantra. I have very confidence that he's going to do as good a job, if not better even, going forward. And then we, my last, since we last met, we had the ACOG, Sacramento Area Council of Governments Meeting, Library Authority Meeting, and again, I also want to congratulate staff of the Diversity Inclusion Commission on a well, and our staff on a well-run multicultural festival, its eighth year, and then celebrating our diversity here in the city. And then finally, we have a recruitment, and I'll also defer to my partner, Vice Mayor Hume, too. We got, we had to recruit for the Sacramento Transportation Authority. We've got a new executive officer search underway as well for, as well for that. And then finally, last week, I just wanted to say, I understand there was some, there was some wondering my whereabouts at the last special meeting that we had last week, and I'd just say that I have work obligations. I did have work obligations, so I was involved in that in the day and in the evening. in that in the day and, and in the evening. So just, I'll leave it at that, but more happy to talk to folks about that in further detail if they are curious. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Sun. Vice Mayor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll too start with the kudos and congratulations and see ya rounds. And I've said this before, but I'll say it again, that chief, you are easily within the top three police chiefs we've ever had, and so. For those of you that don't know, we've had exactly three police chiefs. So it's safe to say that, but no, I, I feel blessed to have met you, blessed to have worked with you. I think you're the embodiment of a collaborative leader, one whose infectious personality, I think, brought morale of the department to a level I've never seen it since its founding. You've done some things, as Councilmember Sun said, to engage the community that I believe has strengthened the bond between your department and the people they serve. And I think that we are blessed in Elk Grove that people respect and hold in high regard their local police department, and not all communities can, can say that, and that's due in no small part to your efforts. And most of all, I got to tell you this, I'm just happy that you're walking away from your end of watch because, you know, not every person who puts on a badge gets to, gets to say that. And so you've, you've earned it, buddy, and thank you so much for your service. I'll be very brief on, on meetings. We had a Connector JPA meeting last Friday. Nothing specific to report with respect to Elk Grove, except that we are moving forward coordinating with the city for the B alignment, which is essentially Waterman Road to Bradshaw Road, and some improvements that will be done there. We are in the process of purchasing right-of-way for the D2 alignment, or excuse me, D3 alignment, which is up south of Folsom, so that will be the first segment to begin construction. And then we had a report on the South Sacramento County Habitat Conservation Plan, which has now been adopted, and so that should streamline permitting processes for mitigation requirements. We had an RT meeting. Not much happened in open session, but it was a pretty robust closed session, unfortunately I can't discuss what happened there, but we will be having a emergency paratransit board meeting this Friday, I believe at 5:00 PM at the paratransit boardroom to discuss the state of things. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, I want to extend a congratulations to Chief Noblet, consistent with the rest of the council. I hear that you'll be taking golf, so, which would mean that you will probably have a pretty high handicap, means I can play with you, so looking forward to an invitation. And fishing is, is the next adventure for you. So congratulations, you've done thirty-five years, which is exactly the age of this council. Not quite. But, you know, thank you so much. You know, I think, I can't begin to express how grateful I am to have the opportunity to work with you. And I'll end it with this. Commander Sahoda of 233 has said, Chief Noblet is the type of officer that it would be pleasant to have him arrest you. So I think that's, that's, that's how the community sees you, is a very pleasant, inclusive chief. And as I congratulate and shared with Captain Albright, he's got big shoes to fill, but I think he's going to be carving his own journey, because most of the people don't know, but Captain Albright, he really is a teddy bear. Wait until you get to know him more. So, you know, aside from that, the only thing that I wanted to highlight is the multicultural festival. Big congratulations to, to the Public Information Office and their efforts, and to staff that all volunteered. Not only that, but to the Diversity and Inclusion Commissioner. And also wanted to highlight specifically a partnership with Councilmember Darren Sun, Kevin Spees, Marion Kraft, Kat Ricketts, Mina Herr, Republic Services, Walmart, and Costco, were able to purchase with leveraging all of our resources and distributed over nine hundred backpacks to students in our city. So that makes me very proud, and it was, it was, nothing beats having a smile on a kid's face. Would you, would you agree, Councilmember Sun? Yeah, so that was a wonderful event. Aside from that, I have nothing else, and let's move to the next item.
They'll take us to Section 8, the Consent Calendar Items.
Okay, want to open public comment? I've seen that no members of the public signed up to speak, want to close public comment, and council deliberation in direction.
Move consent.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? Next item.
They'll take us to Section 9, our public hearing, starting with Item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider rezone tentative subdivision map design review for subdivision layout and exception from roadway network design standards for the Hearthstone Homes project located at 8965 Brown Road.
Good evening, Mayor Lee. Councilmember Sarah Kirchgesner, planning. The project consists of a rezone of approximately three acres from RD, AR5 to RD7, and a tentative subdivision map and design review for subdivision layout to subdivide the parcel into twenty-two single-family lots. The project also includes an exception to allow a minor residential cul-de-sac street to serve twenty-two dwelling units. The project site is located on Brown Road, just east of Elk Grove Florin Road. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site to RD7, which is consistent with the general plan designation of low-density residential. The proposed lot sizes for this proposed subdivision are wider than typical RD7 lots and are more comparable to the development standards required for the RD5 zoning district, typically known as a wide shallow design. Additionally, the project site is located in proximity to both RD7 and RD5 development. Here is the proposed map. Access is provided from a cul-de-sac from Brown Road. The project has been conditioned to allow for future access to the east. The cul-de-sac could be changed into an elbow here over Lot 14 to connect to the east in the future. If the parcels develop and it is determined that that future connection is not needed, the lot could be developed with single-family use in the future. No further environmental review is required pursuant to State Secret Guidelines, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the project 4 to 0 on August 1st. I'm available for questions. This concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions?
No.
There are no questions? No question? All right, thank you. Okay, at this point, want to declare public hearing open, invite the applicant to speak. See applicant here. I see the applicant come on up.
Hello, my name's Paul Panou. Are there any questions I can answer for you guys? I don't really have any other comments. Sarah pretty much covered everything.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have one.
One question, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You're, you're amenable to the loss of the lot in order to provide that future connection?
You, I'm sorry, you said, am I, do I, do I know about that?
You're amenable to it? It's okay with you?
Amenable, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Awesome. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
All right, at this point, want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment. And Mr. Applicant, would you like to come back and rebut yourself? If not, let's move on. Is that good? All right, and at this point, want to declare public hearing close. Council deliberation in direction.
On Motion 1, introducing way before reading by substitution of title only in ordinance finding that no further environmental review is required from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to State Secret Guidelines, Section 15183, and approving a rezone from AR5 agricultural residential five-acre minimum to RD7 low-density residential, seven dwelling units per acre, for the Hearthstone Homes Project, PLNG 18-104, assessor parcel number
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? All right, next motion?
Motion 2.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? All right, next item.
Take us to Item 9.2, which is a public hearing to consider resolution adopting the facility rental fee schedule for the Elk Grove Community Center, Civic Center, Commons, and Old Town Plaza.
Good evening, councilmembers. Lana Yoshimura, Community Event Center Manager. It's a pleasure to be here with before you tonight. Let me exit this presentation. As you know, we continue to make progress on the Civic Center campus. This is the next part of our operations plan, which is to establish fees for the civic, for the community center and our facilities program in general. Some background on the project, so Phase 1 included the Elk Grove Aquatic Center and the Community Center. We opened the Aquatic Center in May, and we are about to open the Community Center this fall. As you, as I said before, the facility reservation fees are establishment of part of the operations of that project. As a reminder, this is the Community Center floor plan. The areas that we are looking as rentable rooms are highlighted in red. It is the main hall, which we are calling Sheldon, Franklin, and Laguna. So each parts of the hall represent areas of Elk Grove, and together they form the Elk Grove main hall. The other portions that we're looking at renting are the community, the commercial kitchen and catering pantry, the conference room, and the veterans' hall. This is the area known as the commons. The commons joins the aquatic center and the community center. It was formatted to create and accommodate market booths. We believe that this is going to be a great addition to our special events in the future. It also houses the Avenue of the Arts, which is the public art that worked, that is along the commons, the Veterans Grove, and the Dancing Fountain. This should be a familiar sight. It is Old Town Plaza, located in Old Town. Old Town Plaza is a paved open space with a restroom. It's currently managed by our Public Affairs Division, but we're moving this under the umbrella as we move to rentable facilities in the city. The plaza is currently in the midst of a master plan renovation, which envision, we envision will make a desirable location. So in establishing the methodology for fees, this is kind of how we work through it. We reviewed the feasibility study, which was done in July 2016. We surveyed local facilities. We then surveyed similar municipal rental facilities. We looked at a tiered pricing, and then we also looked at estimates for operational So establishing a fee study is a very long and lengthy process, so I'm going to try to be as clear and succinct as possible, starting with the definitions we use within this fee schedule. So within tiered pricing, we are looking at a Laguna Ridge resident, an Elk Grove resident. Conversely, a non-resident is someone who does not live within the boundaries of the city, an Elk Grove nonprofit organization, a veterans' group, and other organizations. So these are the definitions of the tiered pricing that you will see throughout the fee schedule. The other definition that I would like to illuminate is peak hours and off-peak hours. We consider peak hours to be Friday through Sunday rentals, which are highly desirable rental days, and off-peak to be weekday rentals. The off-peak rentals will cost less, and basically what we're doing, going to do is create a financial incentive for people to rent during the week if they're working from a budget, so it gives people options for, who are in different financial areas. As I mentioned in our methodology, we looked at Elk Grove rental facilities. Most of these facilities are private rental facilities. Upon review, we felt the pricing of the private facilities were a little bit higher than we wanted to be at, and not within the reasonable fee requirement for public entities. For example, looking at this highlighted area, using the Falls Event Center, which is 4,235 per day and seats 300 people, looking at that, one of the comments we frequently heard when we were asking about pricing was that was a deterrent from renting at the So keeping that in mind, we went back and we looked at municipal rental facilities. So municipal rental facilities that we looked at included CSD's Valley Oak Ballroom, the cities of Citrus Heights, Lowdy, and Folsom. In this column, on the very end, we also included the Group 4 recommendation from the feasibility study. If you look at the far-left column, I'm going to go through the highlighted area, which is basically Elk Grove residents and their pricing. We think Elk Grove residents are going to be the majority of our clientele, so I'm going to highlight what they would pay if they were to rent the community center. I also, I'm going to say that it was difficult to compare apples to apples, because every city does their facility rentals a little bit differently. On this chart, you see highlighted, basically, hours are different, some of them include staff, some of them don't include staff. So we tried to do a range that basically encompassed staffing, amenities, as well as resources. So if you rent from us, you will get a facility attendant included with your rental, you'll get access to the PA system, and then on peak pricing, we're looking at a 12-hour block of time. So just reminders, peak pricing is Friday through Sunday. So as an Elk Grove resident, you would pay $3,300 for a peak rental that works out to $275 an hour for 12 hours of time. The reason that we're recommending 12 hours of time in our experience is that usually a large event takes anywhere from eight to 12 hours for setup through cleanup. When we look at facility reservations, we basically are talking about the time you get access to the facility to the time that you depart. So between the two, we looked at a 12-hour block as being like an industry standard, and if you look at across the board with the municipal governments, most of them are within the eight to 12-hour blocks. The other part that I wanted to highlight is that all of the rentals would also come with a 50% refundable deposit. The deposit basically protects the city if there's any damage during the reservation or if there's a late departure, we had to acquire other staff, so we would require a 50% deposit on top of that $3,300 cost. Moving on to the Elk Grove Hall off-peak, which is Monday through Thursday. So this would be an hourly rate. So if you wanted to, say, host your wedding on a Thursday evening instead of a Friday, you could take advantage of hourly pricing, which would be $175 per hour. So, sorry, wrong page. So our goal is to incentivize rentals during the, for budget-conscious people, and basically it's about $100 cheaper per hour to rent off-peak versus peak if you're an Elk Grove And we do feel that that's within the market analysis for the municipal rates. Looking at municipal rental facilities, individual rooms, so this is if you are holding a smaller event, each of the individual rooms, so Laguna, Sheldon, and Franklin, hold about 150 people per room. So if you wanted to rent that, it would be about $125 per hour as an Elk Grove resident. If you wanted to add on the kitchen, we're recommending a flat rate of $75 per rental. So instead of going hourly, we would recommend adding on to that for $75 for the entire rental. The rooms can be rented simultaneously, so if you wanted the Laguna room and the Franklin room, we could definitely do that, and each would have a kitchen as well if you wanted to do that. We have both the catering pantry and the commercial kitchen available. Other rooms in the community center include the conference room, the veterans' hall, the commercial kitchen. Looking at this, they have the different capacities. I did want to highlight that we are recommending a standing, standalone rate for the commercial kitchen. The reason for that is that this is a health department-certified kitchen. So we, this would allow small caterer who doesn't have a facility, or family who wanted to do, go into baking, to basically rent that facility, and they would be able to retail their products to the public. So it could be like a small business incubator as we move through it, because it allows people to use a health department-certified kitchen and market their facility, and market their products. That was the inside of the building. Now we're moving to outside. So as a reminder, this is the commons. The commons were built to accommodate special events. This layout reflects 10-by-10 vendor stalls. Along the pathways, there's access to power, as well as markers along the promenade, which we can rent out per booth. So if we assigned you to, let's say, booth 12, there's a marker on the ground, that vendor would then go to booth 12. In addition, the Veterans Grove is within the commons. We recognize that as a separate space. We tried to do comparable rental spaces between the two and other municipalities and private organizations, and we have found that this space is truly unique. There was no other way that we would compare this, so there are no other facilities to compare to. So in looking at this, we went on operational costs as well as amenities in the area. So this is pricing for the commons for special events, peak and off-peak, and the Veterans Grove, peak and off-peak. We are recommending a fourth-tiered group here called veterans groups, and this would be veterans groups outside of the three veterans groups that we have agreements with. Our thought process is that a veterans group that maybe wants to hold a company picnic or a company reunion, we would like them to be able to use that space for free. There is really minimal to no cost for them to use the Veterans Grove, so we're recommending a zero cost for veterans groups or military organizations that would want to use the Grove. This is different from the hall. The hall, there is some cost associated with that, so we recommend just the Grove. The Hall, there is some cost associated with that, so we recommend just the Grove. The outdoor space of the Old Town Plaza. So currently, Old Town Plaza is used mainly for special events in partnership with the city. The farmer's market, food truck mania, Brew Fest. The cost for renting the Plaza is, basically covers utilities, which is $250 per day. So for right now, we are recommending a special event rate, a four-hour minimum of peak and off-peak. We would like to reexamine this when the renovations of the mass, Old Town Master Plan are complete. We do believe when we install the Plaza, the public art, the seating, that it will be great amenities that we're investing in, and we would like to revisit pricing at that The last part of costs that we're looking at is staffing costs. So rental of the facility will come with one attendant, but for larger events, for for events that last until, let's say, midnight, we're recommending a second attendant for safety reasons and security. The other staffing cost that we're looking at is that if your event involves alcohol, we would require a security guard to be present. That covers that staffing cost of the private security guard and our cost for administering scheduling for that event. I know that was a lot of information I just tossed at you. I, I'm almost done. We recognize that cost recovery is an important goal for this facility. We're forecasting $250,000 a year, which would cover our costs. Cost recovery is dependent on several factors, though. When we open is a severe factor. We're forecasting for November of 2019 at this time. This is fluid based on construction. Secondly, we are looking at the number of paid reservations we obtain. So for paid reservations, it's important that we create a sustainable marketing and branding plan for that reason. We want to market not only to Elk Grove residents, but non-residents and throughout the region, so it's important that we are able to establish a strong brand and a strong energy for this campus, and I believe we are looking at that later in this meeting. Thirdly, we are looking at the number of gratis uses we approve. Gratis uses are free uses of the Community Center to local nonprofit groups, city departments, what have you, that we wouldn't generate revenue from. We already have agreements with three Veterans Groups and the Senior Center of Elk Grove, so four different nonprofits who have usage built into their agreements. We strongly recommend that nonprofits utilize our community grants process. It's a process that's in place. It would allow them for, would allow them usage of the facility and to be vetted by staff and a committee, and so basically, they would be able to use, utilize the facility with the city's help, as well as keep cost recovery in check for us. So we're recommending that we, people use the community grants process as we move forward through this. Lastly, the last factor is the cost of operations. Without historical data, we're estimating based on other city facilities, such as City Hall. We're not exactly sure what the utility costs are going to end up in this facility. We based it on square footage of what City Hall does. Is it going to be the same? I honestly can't tell you without going through year one. So those are the different factors that are going to affect cost recovery as we move into the Community Center. I do want to thank the coordinator, my community coordinator, Cambria Pollinger, who is the, my right hand, who helped me do all of this work, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lana. A lot of thought went into this, and I appreciate some of the thoughtful consideration you gave as to which groups might get a discount. I just have a question for you. Is there a, and I appreciate the point about using the city grants as a way to, you still get to put, book cost recovery on your books, but it doesn't necessarily come out of pocket for the local nonprofits. But was there any consideration of maybe making the rate for the local nonprofits the same as Laguna Ridge residents, rather than just the Elk Grove residents in general?
We thought about that, and we looked historically across other municipalities, as well as our own experiences with prior organizations. Usually nonprofits are given like the resident rate, which is a discounted rate from the, what we consider the baseline rate, which is non-residents to some extent. If you continued, if you move them down to where the Laguna Ridge resident rate, it would just decrease the amount of cost recovery. That is certainly up to the council's purview as to what you would like to do, but we felt that having a resident nonprofit rate is, was the way to go. As a note of, as a point of information, the feasibility study by G4, they actually recommended that nonprofits book Monday through Thursday as their discount and not be given peak rental. We didn't want to go that route specifically, because we know a lot of fundraisers are held on the weekends, so we didn't want to limit the nonprofits in that way.
Well, I guess I'm looking at the attachment that was the schedule.
Yes.
That's what you brought up on the slides, and the CSD, our other local partner here, they offer a 20% discount for nonprofits only off-peak. And what we would, and they make no distinction between resident and non-resident.
Correct.
And if we look at our non-resident to resident, they're not even getting a 10% discount, I think, is what I figured out. And if they, if we did it at the Laguna Ridge resident rate, then they'd be getting almost a 20% discount from the non-EG resident rate.
As I said, like, we're happy to revise that to be the nonprofits to work with Laguna Ridge residents. We paired them with Elk Grove residents, because let's say the, the nonprofit is not based in Elk Grove, but it serves Elk Grove. So, you know, we're trying to figure out exactly who would be our clientele. So that's why we place the nonprofits that serve Elk Grove and government agencies. So let's say the Office of Elections, for example, they would be considered a government agency and get the middle-tiered rate versus, which is discounted, versus the other organizations' rate.
So this makes no distinction, then, between local nonprofit or nonprofit that may or may not serve Elk Grove?
They have to serve Elk Grove in order to qualify for the discount.
Okay.
So let's say they were based in San Francisco, for whatever reason, and wanted to host an event here. If they did not serve the Elk Grove population, they would be paying the other organizations' rate.
Okay. I'd like to come back to that when we get to council deliberations.
Okay. Councilmember Littrock.
Yeah, Lana, more of a comment. You know, I know in a lot of our discussions, we've talked about these tiered rates, and I can tell a lot of thought was put in here, and I really, really appreciate it, because it, it's one of the ways to kind of control who's getting the benefit, or the people that pay the highest price to be here, and the people from out, out of the city who don't have any contribution, whether it be in property tax, or anything else in the city, or like the folks who have Melrose. So putting this together like this is, is very comprehensive, but really, really appreciate the amount of extra effort that you and the team put forward on this.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Members?
Again, thank you for putting this together. This is very complex, but I, I had a question along the line of our vice mayors. How do you prove that the nonprofit serves Elk Grove residents?
We basically would ask them for their status with the, with the IRS, as well as we would verify what services they do in Elk Grove. So we would specifically have that conversation as part of the application process. So if somebody came to us and said that they were a church based in Folsom, but they have an outreach here, we would ask them, where do you meet? How many people do you serve that are Elk Grove residents, before determining that they were or were not available for the discount?
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. All right. No other questions? Thank you. All right. At this point in time, I wanted to declare a public hearing open. Want to open for public comment? And I thought I saw somebody, but I guess not. We don't have anybody sign up for public comment?
Mayor?
Sorry, Mayor, I believe we do.
Oh, was there?
Sorry, if I've got the wrong thing bolted up, that's me, so.
Okay. I'll wait for you, Jason.
I'll check with Brenda. It sounds like that was polled, but I also heard Mr. Becker calling from the audience.
I heard, I heard Mr. Becker say something, so.
Sorry.
So, Mr. Becker, come on up.
A week's vacation in Yellowstone does wonders. Can somebody bring up the Old Town piece? I had a question.
Lana's coming in.
You didn't get too close to Bison, did you, Randy?
What's that?
You get, you get too close to Bison while you're out there?
No, I did not.
Oh, good.
I've only seen three.
Did you mean this or the fees?
Ah, the fees. Where it said Old Town Plaza. If I read this right, a Laguna Ridge resident is going to pay $50 an hour, but an Elk Grove resident, like myself, is going to pay 65. Is that correct?
Yes.
I live in Old Town.
The assessment district, the Community Facilities District, specifically funded a lot of these improvements.
So Laguna Ridge residents funds Old Town Plaza? Is that what, what you're saying?
No. I'll let.
I'd like to hear from Lana.
Yeah.
So that is a very good question, Mr. Becker. So Laguna Ridge funds do fund the facility software that we're using to schedule it. It funds the staff that we use to schedule it, so there are some funds that, from Laguna Ridge specifically, that are going into the administration of Old Town and the Facilities District in general. So that's why we've included a Laguna Ridge District resident rate here, because there are cost, operational costs that are going from the CFD to this facility reservation
So basically, we have an area that's paying extra fees for the rest of the city, pretty much?
Big-time extra fees.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because there's, in two different areas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And correct me if I am wrong, but I see no additional speakers signed up. Is that right, Mr. Court? At this point, want to close a public comment, and want to declare a public hearing close. Counsel deliberation and direction.
So I'm, I'm happy with everything that's been put forward. I think staff put a lot of thought and effort into this. I would just ask council if they have any thoughts on what I brought up with respect to the discount for nonprofits.
Okay.
Are you speaking specifically of Elk Grove nonprofits?
Yes, I'm speaking specifically for local nonprofits, and I was thinking only applicable in off-peak hours. Yeah.
I'd, I'd support that.
Can you go, can you remind me again what it is that you're looking to do?
I'm suggesting that rather than have the nonprofit rate at the same as the EG resident rate, we have the nonprofit rate at the same as the Laguna Ridge resident rate for off-peak hours.
To, to make it simple for Lana and her team, would you support if it, they had to have a, their address be in Elk Grove?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with them being truly a local nonprofit and not just a nonprofit that serves Elk Grove.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that makes it a different category, because I think what I saw is the nonprofit organization, as long as it serves Elk Grove residents, then it gets, it's a different discount than if it was just a nonprofit. Ms. Yoshikawa, can you confirm that?
So which would be easier to administer?
So basically, I'm going to use like the American Cancer Society as, as an example. Elk Grove doesn't necessarily have a branch of the American Cancer Society, but they do events in Elk Grove and certainly serve Elk Grove residents. If you were to say only Elk Grove-located nonprofits, that would eliminate the American Cancer Society from the discounted rate. So, and to make it easier for administration, it would be easier if everything was across the board, meaning like a nonprofit definition was across the board consistent. Because what will happen is as we go through all of the hundreds and thousands of facility applications we're going to get for this facility, it's going to be difficult for our staff to know, okay, so is this this, is this that? And then having to differentiate between the, the multiple nonprofits. So as consistent as possible in definition would be excellent.
Seems like the address would be pretty simple.
Yes. And like I said, if you did that, then you may eliminate people like the American Cancer Society, or groups that are outside, like perhaps have a base in Sacramento, but have a presence in Elk Grove through service.
But I think if you had a discount for Elk Grove nonprofits below what we have now, and then anybody outside of Elk Grove who serves Elk Grove, you could give them the same as the Elk Grove.
Resident. Is, is that correct, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that seem reasonable?
Say it again. So I'm sorry, I'm a little lost now.
So in other words, with an Elk Grove address gets you the Laguna Ridge rate, otherwise you're at the EG resident rate.
Okay. Just keep in mind, we don't have very many Elk Grove nonprofits locally here with the address here, and so if we're looking to make sure that this center is booked Monday through Friday during those off-peak hours, that opening it up to other organizations or nonprofit organizations that serve our resident here would help us fill up the facility or fill up those days more. I'm fine with that. I am, you know, keeping it with that, but I just want to make sure that we're, because we're, we're also looking at other facilities here in our city, too. CSD, Asian Sports Foundation, I mean, there's, there's other areas that folks can, can rent the facility, and we want to make sure that our facility is full during those days. So I'm, I'm.
But I think either, either way, it's a discounted rate.
You know, I, I'm fine with the proposal, but let me, let me put this on the table. How is a nonprofit that's not in Elk Grove different from one that's in Elk Grove? They're all serving Elk Groveans. And if they're, they are a nonprofit, they're a nonprofit, there's no ifs, ands, or buts. I don't know. Any thoughts? I mean, the way I see it is, if it benefits Elk Groveans, it's, it's good to go. And even if it didn't, I think we want to, we, we want us, the fee structure to be such that we are supportive of the success of nonprofits. And even though they're not doing business here, they may eventually move their headquarters to Elk Grove. I just want to keep the options open and not necessarily penalize any of the nonprofits.
They're already getting a discounted Elk Grove rate if they're not Elk Grove on what's being proposed. And, and I think, you know, we want to, you want to give the first crack at everything to the Elk Grove nonprofits, and then everything outside of Elk Grove, give them the second crack.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I can support that. That's on, you should. So, I think, I think you have a consensus.
I, yeah, I mean, I, so if I, just to recap, so do we, we're saying if you're, if you're based in Elk Grove, address in Elk Grove, you get a Laguna Ridge rate. If you service Elk Grove, regardless of where your address is, you get a Elk Grove resident rate.
Yes, which is a discount as well.
Discount as well, and it's a, it's a off-peak, we're saying it's a off-peak time, right?
Yeah. Correct? It only applies in off-peak hours? No.
Right, right now, the discount applies across the board through peak and off-peak, so if you, if you decided that it's just off-peak, we would have to work through that a little bit logistically, but we can definitely do that, councilmember.
Well, I, I mean, in other case, I'm, you know, I'm fine.
I'd support the peak and the off-peak. Okay.
Yeah. But, I mean, we're talking $15 an hour, so it's, it's fine.
That's fine.
I think it's a good gesture.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
So to be clear, I, I just want to make sure that I have this. So if you are an Elk Grove nonprofit based in Elk Grove, you get the Laguna Ridge rate, peak or off-peak. And then if you are a nonprofit based anywhere but serve Elk Grove, you get the Elk Grove resident rate. Is that correct? Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Excellent. Entertained a motion.
John, do we need a motion with the modification in there?
Yes, so the motion should include the modifications just noted.
I'll move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only. Nope.
Nope. On item 9.2. Should be along. What are you reading?
I'll move to adopt the resolution of the facility rental fee schedule as amended from the DIAS.
Okay, get a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post extension? Next item.
Take us on to item 9.3, which is a public hearing to consider amendments to Elk Grove Municipal Code Chapters 2326, Use Classification System 2327, Allowed Uses and Required Entilements in 2394 Wireless Communication Facilities, and a resolution approving a master license agreement between the City of Elk Grove and New Singular Wireless.
Good evening, member mayors of the councils. John Hobbs, your city attorney, give me a minute while I get the presentation up. That's the wrong one. Sorry. Let's try this one. There it is. All right. So we're going to do this in two parts, myself and your planning manager, Antonio Oblaw. I'm going to give kind of a general overview of the law. This'll look familiar to what you saw before, your November 2018 presentation, with a few modifications and some updates that have occurred since then. So I'll go ahead and start going through that for your benefit and the benefit of the public. So what we're talking about here is cell phone, or excuse me, cell tower regulations and cell facility regulations. That's the ordinance that's being presented for the council's consideration tonight, along with the master license agreement that is being pursued by AT&amp;T as the applicant for both the zoning code amendment and the agreement. So I want to give you an overview of the law, make you, make sure you understand what the scope of your regulation, regulatory authority is. A lot of this is governed under federal law, the Telecommunications Act of 1996. That statute, that federal statute, gives the city council, as a local authority, pretty broad discretion to regulate, with some very significant restrictions, which I'll go through here. One of those restrictions, you cannot unreasonably discriminate against service providers. You have to essentially treat the carriers the same. Another one is that you cannot adopt an ordinance or a regulation that would, to use the federal language, materially inhibit service by wireless providers. language, materially inhibit service by wireless providers. That's a very factual inquiry, which we'll get to in a moment, as to what that might mean. One of the more significant restrictions is one that you've heard about a lot, is whether or not we, as a city, as the city council, can regulate on matters that have been coined environmentally effects, which has been characterized by federal case law as health effects. The city may not regulate the placement, construction, or modification of a wireless service facility on the basis of environmental or health effects, so long as the facilities comply with FCC regulations. We are preempted in that area of regulation. And to be clear, what I mean by area is environmental and health effects. You still have some other regulatory authority. When we have an application for a cell tower application or a cell facility application, federal law imposes what we call shot clocks on that. You must act within a certain amount of time, and any denials of any specific permits must be in writing, and they must be supported by substantial evidence. So one area that the city retains discretionary regulatory authority is in the area of aesthetics. The city may regulate aesthetics. These are generally very individualized decisions as to whether or not a particular facility is out of the character of the neighborhood or is aesthetically displeasing. It's a very factual inquiry. Generalized concerns about something being distasteful, particularly when it's not anything that's necessarily proposed, or what a complaint it might be able to see are oftentimes not sufficient. Generally, in order to hold up a denial based on aesthetic impacts requires some specific facts, some specific concerns. And I've noted a couple of examples here that come out of federal case law. In one example, there were two one hundred and thirty-five-foot towers that were being put up in a heavily wooded area that was out of the character of the neighborhood. The federal court upheld that regulation, excuse me, that denial on the basis of aesthetic grounds. It was simply not consistent with the neighborhood. Another example is a one hundred and twenty-foot monopole in a pristine forested area where it was near parkland and near wetlands. A federal court upheld the denial of that application on the grounds of aesthetics. As you can see, it's a very factual basis, and you've got to have something really out of the character of the neighborhood to support a specific denial on aesthetic grounds. Now, you may have heard of the FCC's order that has been issued. I know we've spoken about that before at our workshop, and we've spoken about that in the past. Last year, the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, issued what we call a declaratory ruling, and that was in September of two thousand and eighteen. That order became effective in January fourteenth of two thousand and nineteen, it's a very lengthy order, and it sets forth the FCC's view on the scope of local authority of federal regulation, specifically as concerning small cell facilities. One of the fundamental issues that comes out of that order is the principle that cities may not act in a way that, again, materially inhibits wireless services. Again, that's a very factual inquiry as to whether or not a particular regulation or a particular denial would inhibit the ability to provide services. But some of the things we look at are the impacts on services broadly, not just services in one jurisdiction. So if one jurisdiction ends up regulating in a very, very constrained matter that has the effect of causing a regional issue, that could be a material inhibition. Another point is that we focus not on the service, a particular service provider in question, we'll look at all the service providers, excuse me, we focus on the service provider in question, not all the service providers. So if one service provider does not have the ability to provide coverage in an area, but other service providers do, then that could still be viewed as a material inhibition if a particular service provider is unable to come in due to government regulations. And an important point to remember is when carriers come in to show whether or not there's a material inhibition, one of the things that agencies look at is whether or not there is a so-called gap in coverage. A gap in coverage is not necessarily dead spots. It can be, but it is not necessarily dead spots or complete gaps, no coverage at all. Material inhibition of a service could apply where there's an attempt to densify or network, or add new services, or improve services. In certain circumstances, the denial of an application in those settings could be viewed as a material inhibition of coverage. And by the way, I think you guys all know me well enough, know me well enough, that if you have questions along the way, just feel free to throw them in. Otherwise, I will keep on going. Another important point of the FCC order is the issue of local fees. The FCC set caps on what cities can charge as local fees. I think unreasonably low, but it is the FCC's order as it stands right now. There are certain presumptively allowed fees. The city may charge a five hundred dollar application fee for up to five facilities, plus a hundred dollars per facility, or if it's a new pole and we don't have any of those for consideration tonight, the city could charge a thousand dollar fee for a new pole. What is also significant is the FCC put caps on the amount of rent that the cities may charge with respect to right-of-way fees or rent. The proposed fees are consistent with the FCC order. The FCC order presumptively allows two hundred and seventy dollars per year per facility. And when the FCC order looked at these fees, it looked at nationwide averages. So obviously, real estate in San Francisco is a little more expensive than, say, rural Kansas. But the FCC looked at sort of nationwide averages and came up with this two hundred and seventy dollar limit. It's not entirely clear how that happened. Again, I think it's a bit low, but I think we're stuck with that for the time being. However, the proposal that staff is presenting tonight does provide a contingency that if the FCC order is set aside, it's currently under litigation, which I'll get to in just a moment, if the FCC order is set aside, the proposal that, or the proposed agreement that we have with AT&amp;T, subject to the council's approval, would provide for increased fees. For the first twenty facilities, the fee would be fifteen hundred dollars. For the next eighty, twenty-one through one hundred, the fee goes up to a thousand dollars. And then for anything beyond that, it's five hundred dollars per facility. So if the FCC order is set aside, the city will have the ability to charge the higher rents per facility. Now, the FCC order sets forth some important provisions on what cities can and cannot regulate. One of them, as I mentioned, is the area in aesthetics. The FCC order recognizes that cities have land use authority under federal law, and that we can impose regulations on aesthetics, but it puts some standards as to what we have to meet in order to do that. And here are the three points that we need to satisfy. The fee has to be reasonable, excuse me, the regulation has to be reasonable, it has to be no more burdensome than for other infrastructure, and it has to be based on clearly defined guidelines published in advance. Those are the three criteria. We feel that the ordinance that's being presented tonight meets those criteria, along with the agreement that AT&amp;T is asking the council to approve. The FCC order also considers undergrounding. Undergrounding may be allowed for aesthetic purposes, so long as, and here's the phrase again, it does not materially inhibit coverage. Some of the cell antennas that you see tonight are proposed on top of light poles. It's not feasible to put those underground, so the facilities being presented tonight don't have an undergrounding component to them. But as you've seen from the staff report, the photos attached to the staff report, they're smaller facilities, there is no ground-mounted equipment. It looks in stark contrast to some of the other things that you may have seen over the past year and a half or so that have come from other communities. The technology seems to have gotten considerably smaller. The FCC order does speak to the issue of spacing of facilities. And it kind of hedges its bets or punts a little bit on that, and doesn't come to any real clear criteria as to what cities are allowed to do. It simply says that as part of an aesthetic regulation, if it meets the three criteria above, cities do have the ability to oppose, impose regulations based on aesthetic criteria. The proposal here is that the facilities and residential zones would be at least five hundred feet apart, and that's for any carrier. So any carrier has to be at least five hundred feet apart, subject to some exceptions. And no cell antennas may be in the front yards, side yards only. Now, a question has been raised, and I think Mr. Ablog is going to have an example and a diagram to show you later, as to what exactly constitutes a front yard for purposes of, say, a corner lot. The short answer is that it's the very front. We have front yard defined in our municipal code already. It's the very front, but it also curves around a little bit. So if you can picture a front yard that has side where there is still some grass that is part of the front yard, that whole area is going to be considered the front yard. So you will catch the corner, and under our proposed regulations, you would not be allowed to put a cell facility on that corner. Now, on the side yard, where you may have a fence or something like that, for aesthetic purposes, to keep it out of the front yard area, the carrier would be allowed with certain approvals to bring in a facility there. I mentioned shot clock. So this is the colloquialism that the FCC order speaks to, which I think is born out of case law. It uses the basketball analogy, of course. And what the FCC order says is that co-locations, which is essentially putting a facility on an existing pole, we have to consider those, and either approve those or deny those applications within sixty days. If it is a new facility, a new pole, we have ninety days to do that. Under the proposed ordinance, we feel that we can meet at a staff level those shot clock requirements, even in the situation where we would have to process a minor conditional use permit or even a conditional use permit. We feel that those are feasible and doable timelines. Some of them might be tight, but we think that we can meet those.
John?
Yes, sir.
On the, just want for clarity, that the co-location does not mean multiple cell sites on the same tower that has to do with, say, a streetlight and adding co-location with our streetlight.
That's correct. It would not be multiple facilities on one pole. As you've seen from the photos, it's not really feasible, the way they're set up, to put more than one pole, so they're going to be on one pole. So I use the term co-location here to be co-locating on an existing pole. So if we miss the shot clock, it doesn't mean that we're automatically lose to the carriers for a challenge. What that allows the carrier to do, if we miss a shot clock time period, is it gives them the right to go to court to determine whether or not we acted reasonably or timely. They don't automatically win. It just gives them a cause of action to step into federal court to determine whether or not we have acted diligently. But again, we think that staff's process should meet these requirements. Now, I mentioned the FCC order. That order is currently subject to federal litigation. A case is pending in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, where a number of cities have filed lawsuit. The City of Elk Grove is not a party to that lawsuit. The League of California Cities is a party that had a lawsuit, which the City of Elk Grove is a member of. So we feel our interest is represented adequately in that case, and there's not a need for us to join the lawsuit. But that seeks to set aside the FCC order in its entirety. I don't know what that lawsuit will bring about. It's been going through the briefing process right now. It'll be some time before we have an answer to that. But that decision, whatever it may be, will impact the future regulation of cell phones, or cell facilities in this area and others. There's also some federal legislation going through addressing the FCC order. There is one that was introduced in January of two thousand and nineteen that seeks to set aside the order in its entirety, similar to what the lawsuit is seeking to do by the plaintiffs. Conversely, there was a piece of legislation introduced in June seeking to codify the order, so you have people on the other side of the issue trying to establish this as federal law to effectively immunize it from court challenge. And then most recently, another piece of legislation was introduced attempting to set aside the FCC order. I checked the status of those bills a few days ago. They don't seem to be moving very quickly, but they have been introduced, and they are pending in Congress. Now, I've talked a lot about federal law. The reason for that is a lot of our regulations are subject to federal law, but we do have some state law regulations that impact what we are seeking to do here. Most of them are contained in the Public Utilities Code. So Section seven nine zero one of the Public Utilities Code, which is a statute that's probably a hundred or so years out, but has recently gotten a lot of attention with the cellphone industry coming in in various areas, says that telecommunications companies may construct in public rights of way, so long as they don't, and here's the word, incommode the public use. First time I saw that word, I admit I had to look it up. I didn't know what it meant. What it means is just that the telecommunications companies cannot interfere with our use of the public right of way. And that's been interpreted relatively broadly in a California Supreme Court case, which I'll mention in just a moment. Section seven nine zero one point one generally preserves the rights of local agencies to regulate their public facilities and rights of way, as does Section two nine zero two. It allows cities to regulate in areas that are not otherwise preempted by, say, federal law, one of which we have mentioned is with environmental and health effects. So the California Supreme Court just recently decided a case in April of this year addressing these statutes. And what the case essentially says is that cities still retain regulatory authority. We are not preempted under state law. It's an important distinction. We're not preempted under state law from regulating in areas like aesthetics and other sorts of traditional land use powers of government agencies. Some of the examples from the Court of Appeal decision, which didn't make their way into the final Supreme Court decision, but I think they're very useful in understanding the scope of this regulation, is that the, a large wireless facility in the so-called painted ladies area, the, if you're familiar with that, the famous houses that you might see on TV, if you put a large, obtrusive cell tower right in front of those, the City of San Francisco would have the ability to say, you know, that's just out of the character of the neighborhood, we can prohibit that. And the Supreme Court said, that's fine, you can do that. Conversely, the court said, if you take that same facility and you put it in a wireless area, or, excuse me, an industrial area with lots of other similar sorts of things, then you wouldn't have an aesthetic problem. So the point is that this is a very factual inquiry as to whether or not it's outside the character of the neighborhood. It's also important to note that this case only interpreted state law. It didn't touch federal law, and there's no reason it would, because it was a state Supreme Court decision, so we still have the overlay of federal law over all of this. So that is it with my presentation. If there are no questions, I will turn it over to Mr. Ablog.
Any questions? No questions?
No questions. Before I turn it over, I'd like to thank Mark Graham for his advocacy in this. He's been a zealous advocate. He and I have not always agreed on the law, but that's okay. I appreciate his enthusiasm. I also thank AT&amp;T for making concessions. They're the applicant in places where they didn't want to. And what I think you're going to find at the end of all of this is the ordinance before you really is a legislative compromise, and that's a big part of what legislation is about. With that, I will let Mr. Ablog go through the specifics of the ordinance.
John, we want to thank you for your work, too. We know you put a lot of work into this.
Thanks, sir.
And Antonio Ablog, planning manager, here to present to you tonight these proposed zoning code text amendments and the MLA licensing agreement. First of all, I'd like to thank Johnson Hobbs for providing the regulatory framework for the proposed amendments and licensing agreement before you tonight. As John explained, the proposed text amendments for tonight that will be presented to the council affect zoning code chapters twenty-three point two six, twenty-three point two seven, and twenty-three point nine four. Chapter twenty-three point two six describes the land use classifications. Chapter twenty-three point two seven establishes land uses and the requirements for planning entitlements, also commonly referred to as permitted uses, including conditionally permitted uses and uses permitted with a minor use permit. And also, chapter twenty-three point nine four, which is dedicated to the regulation and installation of antennas and other wireless communications facilities. Currently, our zoning code only addresses telecommunications facilities in the broad sense. It has one definition that covers all wireless transmitting and receiving facilities. It does title that land use as telecommunications facility. In looking at this code and the request by AT&amp;T to address the processing of small cell facilities, we felt this current definition limited in bifurcating or delineating between the traditional large-scale towers and antennas and the small cell facilities that AT&amp;T is proposing. Tonight, staff is proposing to create two new definitions. First, we are looking to create the wireless communications facility definition, which takes the same definition of our current code, but conforms that to our wireless communications chapter and retitles that land use as wireless communications facility. We will retain that definition and apply that to the tall antenna towers. Some of them you see on power pylons or disguised as tree antennas. We will creating, we will be creating a wireless communications facility small cell definition. With the creation of this land use, there are certain parameters which a facility must fall into to meet this criteria. You see those before you in the definition. To meet the definition of a small cell facility, the volume of, the total volume of all small antennas on a single facility or property shall not exceed a volume of six cubic feet. Any individual piece of associated equipment at that location shall not exceed nine cubic feet. And the sum total of all equipment located on any single facility by the total of all providers, not just a single provider, shall not exceed twenty-eight cubic feet. However, since these will be located on city light poles, we do not foresee the possibility that multiple carriers can be located on a single pole. The photos I have before you here depict the traditional cell towers. Those cell towers are either on new poles or existing equipment. Those range in height from fifty-five feet up to seventy-five feet. Those antenna panels are generally six feet tall by eighteen inches wide. To the right, you'll see the small cell facilities that are proposed with the AT&amp;T application this evening. Those facilities, it's a canister antenna that will go on top of a light pole. The canister is approximately three feet in height and eleven inches in diameter. Yes?
I think I may have asked this before, but I just want to, for clarity, has anybody done the structural pole loading calculations on what are the different light poles that we have by adding these facilities?
I'd have to defer to Bob Murdock.
As part of the permitting process, they're going to have to provide calculations to us to show that the pole will support the wave.
Are we going to use a third party, like the vendors who supply the poles, to see the, because there's usually a table that is available with that.
I mean, we're going to take a look at it. I think it's pretty common practice for them. If they're going to use our facility to have to show, to be able to show us, it'll support it, and then we'll review it. And I know we have structural staff in community development or maybe an outside firm. We haven't quite decided how we check that, whether we think we have the ability to do it ourselves or reach out to somebody that does.
Because the additional wind loading that's going to be caused without is pretty significant for that type of pole.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, you'll see a comparison of the small cell facilities in scale with the traditional monopine facility, as we call it. You can see the difference in height for the overall height of the towers, and you see silhouette of two persons standing there, just to get a perspective of those heights. So on with the changes to the land use table. As you can see, we are taking the existing telecommunications facility row and re-titling that wireless communications facilities. Those entitlements regarding conditional use permits and by right uses will stay the same. Those kind of wireless communications facilities continue to be conditional use permits across all zones, except for the industrial zone where those will be allowed by right. And we'll be adding a new row for the small cell facilities. You can see that as the second row, where we have a combination of both conditional use permits, minor use permits, and by right uses. We do include a number of footnotes with those. Those footnotes generally refer to situations where the conditional use permit will not be needed when a licensing agreement is in place and agreed upon by the carrier and the city. So to distill this table, related to land use, as far as permitted by right, this is related to the small cell facilities, industrial districts. Those small cell facilities will be permitted by right. Permitted with a minor conditional use permit. And it's important to note, the minor conditional use permit is a discretionary approval. That approval is granted by the zoning administrator, and it goes through a public hearing process with publicly noticed hearing, similar to a full commission level conditional use permit. However, the hearing body is a lower-level hearing body, still subject to public hearing. Those districts where the minor use permit applies would be the agricultural residential districts, residential districts, and public quasi-public districts. And then finally, those districts where small cell facilities would be allowed with a conditional use permit, planning commission approval would be agricultural districts, commercial districts, mixed-use districts, and office districts, generally known as non-residential districts. However, it's important to note, with the footnotes that we're proposing tonight, small cell facilities in these non-residential districts would be administratively approved with city council approval of the MLA between the city and AT&amp;T. Those administrative approvals would go through the Public Works Director for permitting. The MLA would not apply to any future request to locate small cell facilities in residential districts. That would remain a minor use permit. Again, this is just a graphic showing residential and agricultural residential. Those are always subject to a minor conditional use permit. Agricultural, commercial, and office, non-residential districts, those would allow for administrative approval with an approved licensing agreement. Without the licensing agreement, those would be conditional use permits. We are also putting in small cell standards for these new small cell-defined facilities. As far as the small cell standards, no small cell wireless communication facility shall be placed within 500 feet of another small cell wireless communication facility. And that goes for all carriers, not just a single carrier. No small cell wireless communication facility shall be located immediately adjacent to a front yard of any residential dwelling.
Antonio, can you clarify for me how the zoning code defines a front yard?
Yes, the front yard, I don't have it up here, but there's a graphic. It is defined in our zoning code. The front yard for an internal lot, it's fairly simple. It's the portion of the street that your house faces. On a corner lot, it gets a little more difficult because the front yard actually wraps around the corner. If you take the, if you draw a line from the front of your house straight to that street side yard, that line delineates where your front yard stops and the street side yard begins. So if there was a light pole at the round corner of an intersection, that would be in the front yard. But if it's further back along the side yard, that would be considered a side yard. In most residential districts, that would be about 20 feet from the round corner.
Okay. Do you feel that needs further codification in the ordinance or that will be able to be interpreted?
No, I feel because we have a definition of front yard in our code with a graphic delineating where that is, I believe that's sufficient delineation within how we express that development standard in the small cell code.
Please, Mayor Hume, if I might, to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Ablog said. If you look at this graphic, it's a little hard to tell just the way the highlighting comes down. But if you look at the green line, you'll see between the red, and go up a little bit. There you go. So you see kind of a white area. So the green will wrap around a little bit in there, or, excuse me, the red will wrap around, the red will wrap around a little bit towards the green. So you capture, you clip the corner there. And so our zoning code expresses this in diagrams and shows that the front yard is considered part of the corner there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's essentially what I was driving at, is the point that Antonio made, that if you take the plane of the front of the house and extend it out to the side street, that area is considered front yard, regardless of its orientation to the actual front of the house.
Yeah.
So where I have the arrow hovering right now, that's typically about where the front yard would stop.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, again, just if you have somebody looking through our code and doesn't catch the 28 cubic square feet maximum in the definition of a small cell, we've also placed that in the development standards, just so that's not missed. We do have additional amendments within the code. We have, we are proposing an amendment to co-locations on existing towers with an approved conditional use permit. This doesn't apply to small cell towers. This will generally apply to the large-scale towers. Currently, our code requires those to go back to Planning Commission. For any amendments, they could be small additions in height or additional antennas. Based on the new FCC regulations, the city is really limited in either approving or disapproving those. The FCC has created definitions for what they consider substantial conforming facilities. And generally, if they're in substantial conformance, the city must approve those. We have gone over that with the Planning Commission a couple times, and they have agreed that those modifications that are deemed to be in substantial conformance would go to the zoning administrator for amendment instead of back to the Planning Commission. This also speaks to the new shot clock that the FCC requires for those amendments to facilities, that 60-day shot clock. We feel moving amendments of those facilities down to a zoning administrator approval would better allow staff to meet that 60-day shot clock. Furthermore, we're amending Section 23.94.060, which is related to the non-ionizing electromagnetic magnetic radiation that's emitted from cell facilities. And John provided the regulatory framework for what the city can and cannot regulate. The emission of that radiation from cell facilities is the purview of the FCC, not the city. Therefore, we struck language, though the towers are, must still maintain conformance with FCC regulations. And on to the master licensing agreement. The master licensing agreement works hand-in-hand with the code amendments that are proposed tonight. The master licensing agreement speaks to the permit processes, small cell locations, small cell designs, the operations and maintenance of those facilities, payments to the city, and the term of the license, master licensing agreement. With the MLA permit process, if the MLA is approved, it will allow small cell installations to be approved by the Public Works Director when consistent with the terms of the MLA. However, that's only in non-residential zoning districts. The MLA includes provisions for specific locations and design. I briefly went over those designs earlier. Just generally, it's a three-foot tall by 11-inch-wide canister. There are two associated radio, remote radio units that will be mounted at a lower height, approximately 11 feet. Those boxes, I believe, are about 18 inches tall by 10 inches wide, and there would be two of those for each antenna installation. With this MLA, they're proposing two designs, one for the standard, what we call a Cobra Head design, and the other for a more decorative design, something you might find down in the Laguna Ridge neighborhood. Both those antennas and remote radio units are generally the same size. However, they're painted to match the existing facility. The MLA permit does address operations and maintenance. It requires the operator of each facility to comply with all FCC regulations regarding frequency emissions and exposure limitations. And it also requires audits to confirm operation of those facilities. Facilities that have not operated for three months will be deemed abandoned, and we will require those to be removed. John went over fees earlier. There will be initial $10,000 licensing agreement fee, $500 fee for subsequent site permits, and a $270 annual rent fee for each facility. And if the FCC order is repealed, the agreement allows for a different pricing tier, which would be $1,500 for the first 20 locations, 1,000 for locations 21 through 100, and beyond that, $500. The MLA also expresses an initial term of 10 years. It does allow for two successive five-year extensions for a total life of 20 years. That would be subject to agreement between both the applicant and the city. This was presented to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did vote four to zero to forward the zoning code amendments and master licensing agreement to the city council for approval. We did hear from a number of speakers, and the concerns that they relayed to the commission are included, were included in the staff report. As far as environmental review for this project, no further environmental review is necessary pursuant to Sequesterate Guidelines Sections 15183, which is conformance with the general plan, 15301, related to existing facilities, and 15300 for new construction or conversion of small structures. Staff recommends tonight that the city council adopt a resolution finding that no further environmental review is necessary under California Environmental Quality Act, adopt an ordinance amending Title 23 of the Elk Grove Municipal Code related to cellular facilities, and adopt a resolution approving master licensing agreement for small cell wireless communication facilities between city of Elk Grove and New Single Wireless, also known as AT&amp;T. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Councilman?
Yeah, Antonio, I don't know if it's for you or John. On the agreement that we have, does it cover liability for person and property if, say, the pole fails due to the?
Yes, the carriers is required to defend and indemnify us. They also required to retain and maintain insurance for anything having to do with their facility. So if they damage our facility, if there's personal injury, anything like that caused by their facility, they are liable for that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you. At this point in time, I want to declare public hearing open. Invite the applicant to come on up. Is applicant here tonight?
Good evening. Matt Jurgovich for the applicant AT&amp;T. We're very grateful for staff's and the city's hard work on these items, and we respectfully request approval accordingly of the code amendments and MLA as written this evening. AT&amp;T has signed and delivered the master license agreement to the city, and we're ready to move forward. Of course, AT&amp;T reserves the right to contest. The city code should unlawfully inhibit future wireless deployment, but we respectfully request your approval. We'd like to move forward. The items have been thoroughly vetted by staff and AT&amp;T. Obviously, we've signed the agreement, and we've been at this for about two years with a lot of hard work and discussion during that time. So thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Councilmember Detrick, you had some questions about the structurals. If I may, I'd like to answer that question first. I have intimate knowledge of the structural analyses, although I'm not an engineer. I do know that thorough structural analyses are submitted with the application packages in other jurisdictions that include analyses of the foundations, the caisson where the pole is mounted. I like to think of these facilities and this deployment as a public-private partnership. What I've seen in conjunction with those analyses is that oftentimes the poles themselves, as they already exist out in the field, have some structural deficiencies. For example, they may have been bumped by an automobile disrupting the foundation bolts or what have you. Through the industry's analysis of those poles, we're able to correct those poles and make them structurally sound. And those are obviously subject to the engineering review of the city.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you for being here this evening. I had a question. I've been learning a lot about this subject matter. Are you familiar with 5G fixed wire, FWA? Can you explain the difference between the small, just for everybody, the small cell 5G and the 5G fixed wire?
Generally, you know, generally speaking, I could talk about those technologies, but really, those technologies are not what's before you today. There's been a lot of discussion, and general discussion amongst the general public about 5G. What's currently proposed and what's depicted in the photographic simulations and the drawings attached to the master license agreement is strictly 4G. So AT&amp;T does not have a 5G plan yet for Elk Grove. We're proposing small cells which have 4G technology to address current demands. AT&amp;T is seeking to address its current customer demands with this 4G technology. And the future of 5G is out there, but it's not what's being currently proposed.
Thank you for that clarification as well. Maybe I'll just ask the question another way. My understanding is the 5G fixed wire is different in that there is a longer range from the antenna to the fixed. from the antenna to the fixed wireless, I forget what the acronym for the A part, but which is different, and allows for a greater distance, which is different than what we're talking about today, the small cell, which requires a closer proximity.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, I'm not an engineer. I'm comfortable talking about what AT&amp;T has currently proposed and the ordinance and the master license agreement. When it comes to 5G, I personally am excited about the possibility of increased data speeds and making the network better, but I'm not at liberty to discuss technologies, not before council today. My apologies.
No, it's fine. Thank you.
I'm just curious, does it bolt on the light fixture, or how does it fit on the hardware?
Yes. So with the 4G proposed today, there are two radios, and if you may, you could, for everybody's benefit, pull up maybe one of the exhibits so we can all see what we're talking about, or I can show the staff report. Oh, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, excellent. So as you can see, these facilities essentially, you know, in a nutshell, consist of three components. You have two radios attached to the pole. They're, you know, to facilitate the attachment and the associated cables that run up within the pole. There are some holes that are made in the pole to facilitate the attachments. Then there's the antenna component, which is at the top, and there's essentially an aesthetic yoke that wraps around the pole so that it's, you know, one visual silhouette. Okay. As far as the engineering, I think your question maybe is more related to the engineering, and I think that...
Yeah, I'm just curious how it fits on, you know, I mean...
Yeah.
And the reason being is, you know, I just had a vision after Councilmember Detrick talked about liability, it falling over.
You know, I've been involved with the deployment of hundreds of these facilities, and, you know, these days, if you walk through the city of Sacramento, you're gonna see them deployed, you know, adjacent jurisdictions in the Sacramento area, these are starting to be deployed. The San Francisco Bay Area, if you, you know, if you walk down the street of San Francisco, you're gonna see these on just about every corner already. So this is not necessarily brand-new technology, and I haven't heard of any poles falling down.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I want to open for a public comment, and we have 29 speakers. So I'd like to encourage each and every one of you to stick to your three minutes. At the two-minute, you will see the timer blink, and you would have one minute to sum up what you have to say. That being the case, please, you know, allow the rest of your, rest of the members of public to speak and stick to your three minutes, ladies and gentlemen. Our speaker is Constance Connolly. Following Ms. Connolly is Irene Obiwe.
First, I'd like to give an AT&amp;T financial disclosure. My dad, when he got out of the Army, went to work for AT&amp;T, and that's the only job he ever had. So my financial disclosure is I was raised on AT&amp;T salary. I would like you all to give a financial disclosure regarding AT&amp;T if you took any contributions. This is a very complex issue. Not only is it technically complex, but then you throw in all the legal mumbo jumbo, and you have our heads spinning for the general public. So I hope that when you come down to the deliberation portion of this, that you really kind of just simplify it. So we, the general public, can understand exactly what you're voting on and whether you approve this or not. So my whole thing is the human element, and my dad always taught me to stick up for what I believe in, and I thank God rest his soul, even though he worked for AT&amp;T his entire career, he would applaud what I'm about to say. You might hear that 5G is good for business, but in reality, 5G, along with the accompanying AI, will cost jobs, especially in the fast-food industry, industry of which Elk Grove has an abundance. It is the will, is it at the will of this council to put low-income residents out of work? Stephanie, Steve Lee, and Darren, all three of you have younger children. Do you want 5G boxes outside your homes or near your children's school? I'm here to speak adamantly against that because I refuse to pay Russian roulette with your children's health. And the same is true for all Elk Grove's children. And I am emotional about this because I am not, I'm not a parent, but I'm an aunt, and I am a neighbor, and I'm a resident of Elk Grove, and every single one of Elk Grove's children have to, I care about every single one of them. One child getting sick on 5G is one child too many, whether you know them or not, and this is why I stood up here in 2006, fighting for the street racing ordinances, because one child dying because of street racing, Pat Hume, you know very well, because you wrote the educational component that is taught in schools today. Why did we do that, Pat? To save lives. And as God is our witness, we have saved lives. To be blunt, and I am being melodramatic, do you really want to subject children to the dangers of 5G and have that on your conscience? Again, just one child is one child too many. Climate change is not a hoax, and neither are the potential dangers of 5G technology.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Irene Obiwe. Following Irene is Susan Mason.
Well, good evening. My name is Irene Obiwe, and I'm a nurse practitioner by profession. I moved from the Bay Area in 2000 to Elk Grove, and the reason I moved was to seek a better life for myself and for my family. And since 2000, I've seen Elk Grove grow tremendously, and, which is good, but hearing about this small cell installation in Elk Grove is kind of something that brought me to, almost to tears, because having been a nurse for 35 years, I've actually treated patients that died of slow death, and these are due to several ailments, several illnesses that kill them slowly. And because of that, I have a prayer that I say every day, for death to meet me alive. I want each and every one of you to think about that prayer. What that means is, I don't want to die slowly, and that is what this small cell, 4G, is bringing to Elk Grove. We might say, oh, statistics is showing no health effect now, but we don't know what's gonna happen down the line. Just using a cellphone very close to your ear, you can see some warmth, some heat coming out of a cellphone, talk of a cellphone small antenna in front of your house. Those of us that live in Hampton Village, we're already dealing with the propane tank over there, which is a health risk, and now we have to disclose it each time we are selling our property. So what happened with this antenna in front of my house if I'm gonna sell my house? So think about it. I voted for you, Mayor Steve, because I know you would do a good, make a good decision on my behalf, and this is not one, this is not one of the reasons I voted for you. So I'm standing before you guys this evening to think about it, think about our health. All I'm hearing today is money. You have to survive before you leave. Nobody die with money, be put in the grave with money. We're gonna leave the money here. All they are talking about is 10,000, how much you're gonna make of this cell antenna. What about our health? What about the health of our children? So please vote against it. It shouldn't come to Elk Grove, or if it's gonna even come, it should go far away from residential houses, because my house has a pole they were just describing there. So I can see one going up in front of my house. I don't want it. So please, I'm begging you, check your conscience. Money is not everything. Let's survive before we leave. Don't just let us talk about money, money, money. Elk Grove has grown, thank God. When I came here, there was nothing here, but it came to the lot of problems, but this should not be one of the problems because it's very risky. A lot of people would die in Elk Grove. Please, think about it.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Susan Mason. Susan Mason, following Susan Mason is Leslie Haynes.
Mr. Mayor, before Mrs. Mason begins her comments, I just want to say with respect to the last speaker, the proposed code amendment as exists right now would not allow and intended to be installed on the pole in front of your house. It would only be on poles that are to sides of houses. Hold on, hold on. Hold on. We cannot regulate health concerns as per the FCC. If that is the only argument that you're bringing to this podium, that we have no power to do anything about that. So I'm happy to sit here for the next hour and a half and listen to everybody talk about it, but we have nothing, no way to control anything to do with health. There are ways we can regulate and control, and those are the things we've tried to address in this ordinance. We cannot use health as a reasoning. Thank you, Susan.
Yes, Susan Mason, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Susan Mason. I live in Elk Grove, and I write things down, or otherwise I ramble. So I'm here tonight to request that you deny the application for code amendment and the master licensing agreement with AT&amp;T, or direct the staff to make the certain changes, postpone the vote, and bring this item back in one month. I have many concerns that I would like to share. In my opinion, all small cell equipment that I've seen is ugly, and I don't want them on light poles in my neighborhood. The FCC chairman is a former Verizon attorney, so my concern is that there's a clear conflict of interest. I think we should challenge that. I think that we should wait for the lawsuits to be completed, considered before any decisions made here. AT&amp;T, as well as Verizon and Sprint, seem to be rushing their product to cities across the United States. I ask why? Do they know something is coming that will restrict their ability to install the cell tower equipment? I am still not convinced that there will be no privacy or security concerns to residents, and I'd say think Huawei. Other cities have not given into their plans. I request that you direct your staff to research what other cities have done and seek out more information. Again, challenge things. Perhaps another idea I had was invite the other two big telecommunications companies to submit their applications at the same time, review all three, and then look at the overall impact on Elk, on Elk Grove. As it stands, and as I understand it, each company acts independently and competitively, and will require their own equipment. So does signing with AT&amp;T first give them the edge? And then what does that do to, you know, when Verizon comes in and Sprint comes in? The residents of Elk Grove are not fully engaged and informed. I ask that you require the city to send out notices on behalf of the companies, informing residents of the plans and the length of the agreement in simple terms. And I agree with one of the other speakers, it's way too complicated. I still don't understand why SEQUA is not a part of this equation. You can't build a building without, you can't do anything without having some kind of environmental review, and this seems to be a pretty big deal. So there's no environmental impact with having these cell towers? I don't think so. The city does have the authority to regulate for aesthetics. However, the health and safety of residents should be a prime concern of yours, regardless of what the FCC says. Anyway, the FCC does not prevent the city from limiting the number of cell antennas or their proximity to homes. The proposed zoning code amendment does that in five ways, the simplest of which is, requires a permit for each cell antenna. If you've received recommendations on more ways to do this, please use them. I ask you, please don't rush into any agreement. Deny the application or postpone your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Leslie Haynes. Leslie Haynes. Leslie? Come on up. Following Leslie is Lila August.
Yes, my name is Leslie Haynes, and I have lived here for 30 years in Elk Grove, and this seems to be, I don't think I could say it better. I'm thinking more of my daughter's family who lives a block and a half from me, and my grandchildren who live a block and a half from me. Not only are they unsightly, they are unnecessary. They truly are unnecessary in residential areas, and I'm just gonna, I couldn't have said it better than Ms. Mason who preceded me, so all of her points are better than whatever I was gonna say. Thank you. Think of it seriously. If you're saying that this is an agreement that is long-term effects, that seals us into something that we're not, that we're not able to get out of, to not be able to extract ourselves, what I know about AT&amp;T, Verizon, and Sprint, I read in the financial papers, in the financial section of the paper, and their bottom line is money. Their bottom line is shareholders, CEO, benefits. I am a stakeholder in what they're doing, and to me, the 160,000 residents of Elk Grove should be considered every bit as much as whatever benefit this is gonna give to AT&amp;T. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Lila August.
And Ms. August had submitted a PowerPoint presentation to accompany her comments. She did that in accordance with the city policy, so I'll help pull that up for her.
Okay. On the deck is Elizabeth Russo, following Ms. August.
And Ms. August, you can use the keyboard and navigate away.
Okay, hi. I'm Lila August. I'm a 28-year homeowner in Elk Grove, and what I would like you to do is restrict 5G from our neighborhoods, our beautiful parks, and our precious schools. I was gonna talk about the proposed code amendment that limited, that kept them away from our front yards, but I'm glad that you, Mr. Hobbs, and Mr. Blogg, and all of you clarified that, so I really appreciate that, I really do. I hope, hopefully, you're gonna actually have it in writing, you know, about the building thing, you know, in the front yard, and it's not just gonna be that red and green line diagram. That would be what I would like you to do, actually. Thank you. And it really was a pleasure meeting with all of you. Thank you. Dr. Martin Paul gives us compelling evidence for eight distinct types of great harm caused by electromagnetic field exposures and the way this harm is caused. I know you can't regulate on the basis of health, but I know you can regulate any way that you can regulate that reduces the cell antennas in our town would help this situation. In his document, 5G Risk Scientific Perspective, which I emailed all of you, he also gives us well over 100 primary literature citations, all showing the non-thermal exposure health risks. He has impressive credentials as an esteemed professor of biochemistry and basic medical science. A degree in physics, he earned Phi Beta Kappa with honors. He has two doctorates, biochemistry and genetics. I want to share with you the eight types of great harm coming from electromagnetic field exposures, like from the cell antennas poised to be placed every 500 feet everywhere in Elk Grove. This harm occurs from DNA damage three ways. It damages our DNA. It creates low fertility, which leads to sterility, all the way down to 15 different ways of creating and causing cancer. So these are, these are well documented. He has all that research, all those citations that I emailed you. Over the past year and a half, you have been given ample information to know this harm is real. It's currently making us sick, and it will only get worse with increased exposure. These cell antennas are low to the ground, closer to our bodies, they're close together, so there's way more of them, and it makes them much more harmful. And you know this in spite of propaganda from heavily invested telecom companies, and unfortunately, from our government. So thank you for regulating any way that you can to reduce this harm, and also, please consider postponing your decision tonight. You have a lot of dense information, and only had three days to read it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Russo.
And Ms. Russo had submitted a video to be shown. She also submitted that in accordance with the policy, and I'll be able to pull that up, and she can have that accompany her comments.
Following Ms. Russo is Ron Craig.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, and Mayor Lee.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and Mayor Lee. I really appreciate the time being here. I am a resident of Elk Grove since about 1985, and I am here respectfully to request that you postpone your decision on Agenda Item 9.3 until next month, as this is a very complicated and consequential matter. You have only had the 71-point staff report on this issue for three days, less the weekend, and you all have other full-time jobs, which I'm very impressed with all the work you have to do here, and you have families to balance against digesting all this stuff and reviewing it. I am all for improved technology, but you are our voice and our protectors. I am concerned about the placement and location of future 5G cell towers. You will be seeing a clip that you may have seen before, relative to the distance, that range of over 2,000 feet in the real world that at least one manufacturer, Verizon, has developed and tested. The CNBC interviewer asks the Verizon CEO, E. McAdam, "Can you get through trees? Can you get through leaves? Can you actually get somewhere you don't need cell towers ever? You know, 25 feet from my house." McAdam says, "Yeah, well, those are some of the myths of millimeter wave." Because no one thought that was good. And by the way, we're the only ones that have it now, so it is to their advantage to say it's no good. When we went out to 11 markets, we tested for well over one year, so we could see every part of foliage, every storm that went through. We busted the myth that it has to be line of sight. It does not. We busted the myth that foliage will shut it down. I mean, that was back in the days that a pine needle would stop it. That does not happen. And the 200 feet from a house, we're now designing network for over 2,000 feet from transmitter to receiver, which has a huge impact on our capital need going forward. So the myths have disappeared. So the video can be shown now.
So many people are focused on what this will mean for fixed wireless in the home.
Yeah.
When the day comes, and I, I don't actually have my phone on me right now, but when the day comes that I can be delivering, you can deliver a gigabyte there.
Yeah.
Can you get through trees? Can you get through leaves? Can you actually get somewhere where you don't need cell sites, you know, 25 feet from my house?
Yeah, well, those were some of what I called the myths of millimeter wave, because no one thought that was good, and by the way, we're the only ones that have it now, so it's to their advantage to say it's no good.
Yeah, Ledger said it was no good. He made a point of that.
Well, I'm an engineer. I'll just speak for what I...
Thank you ma'am, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for listening.
The next speaker is Ron Craig. Following Ron is Jeff Durbin.
Can I ask that the speakers, if he has put you on deck, if you wouldn't mind coming up to these front chairs here so that you're ready to go when your name's called? Thank you, I appreciate that.
My name's Ron Craig. I've lived here for 45 years. I've sat through this meeting, and I've sat through three or four before this. I can't believe that AT&amp;T walked up here and threatened you guys, and literally said, "If you don't pass it tonight, we're gonna sue you." That really bothers me. There must be other competitors who would give us more opportunity for competition in providing this service. I really urge you to postpone it or vote against it, because to me, when you're threatened by the AT&amp;T, it's disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Durbin. Jeff Durbin. Following Jeff is Kathy DeRosa. Jeff Durbin, go on once. Come on up, please. Following Jeff is Kathy DeRosa.
Thank you. My name's Jeff Durbin. I'm a resident of Rancho Cordova. I came and attended the Planning Commission hearing and vote, I guess about last month. I noticed that yesterday, the Sacramento City Council addressed a lot of things, but they addressed 5G wireless deployment update. Excuse me, and I got from their website yesterday. They issued something in response to community concerns regarding the health and safety of 5G in the city. Sacramento, as I know, as I understand, has already signed in on quite heavily with the big carriers, and to see them even speak of anything now is kinda different, but... Says the following steps have been taken to provide clarity to the council and community regarding the status of wireless development. Review the city's authority to regulate wireless development. Review the actions taken by other cities, that would include lawsuits. Pocket Greenhaven pilot study conducted to confirm installed devices meet FCC compliance requirements. Expert consulted to review site permits, site measurements, and analyze results. Hire a consultant to conduct a comprehensive review of wireless development processes to make recommendations to the city to align its practices with the best practices. That would be ongoing. This review would include a minimum of FCC emissions compliance requirements, application requirements and fees, aesthetic requirements, public notification process, and reviewing existing standards and resolutions and ordinance. So, I am asking you to postpone your decision, and as I meant, I heard that there was only three days that you had this latest information. I looked at some of that online. It's pretty, it's pretty hard to understand some of that. But I would like you to postpone this vote until we get more information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kathy DeRosa, Kathy DeRosa, come on up. Following Kathy DeRosa is Mark Graham. Go on once. Kathy DeRosa, go on twice. All right. Mark Graham, come on up, Mr. Graham. Following Mr. Graham is Mark Edgar.
Mr. Graham had submitted a PowerPoint presentation, which will, that he submitted in accordance with the policy, which will accompany his comments. He also referred to a PDF which was sent earlier this afternoon, and that document wasn't submitted in accordance with the policy. It would be at the discretion of the city council if you wanted to view those.
All right, go ahead, make your pitch.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Graham, and I live in Elk Grove. It is apparent that at least one member of the council, with all due respect, Councilmember Hume, has been misled by the city attorney as to the extent and the scope of the city's powers to regulate cell antennas, and where that line is between your powers and the federal preemption. You should not move forward until you fully understand it. I sent you a list of questions to Mr. Hobbs too, but I sent them to each council member, and I said, "Please, ask him. Ask him. What is the reason for your reluctance to ask your legal advisor for legal advice?" The Telecommunications Act does not use the phrase "in this area", yet it's in the staff report in three different places, and he said it again tonight. He's telling you an interpretation of the federal preemption that is much broader than it really is. I asked him a long time ago, "Can you show me any case law that supports your interpretation that the city cannot regulate in this area?" And he said, "Mr. Graham, I will not answer your questions." He will answer your questions. Now, what is the reason for your reluctance to get legal advice from your legal advisor? Play the tape forward in your minds. What would be so bad if you took that list of questions that I sent to you and said, "Okay, please, Mr. Hobbs, for the sake of argument, could you please answer these?" Is that gonna be some type of disaster? Is the roof of this room gonna cave in? In particular, what is the basis for the city requiring a permit for each cell antenna? What is the basis for saying the cell antennas have to be 500 feet apart? What is the basis for saying that you can't have a cell antenna immediately adjacent to a front yard? The answer is, you have the power to do that, and it's not on the basis of environmental effects. It's either, it's some combination of local zoning authority, which is specifically preserved by the Telecommunications Act, Section 704, and aesthetics. And the point is, if you can do those three things on the basis, on some basis that's not environmental effects, then you can do all kinds of other regulations also that are not on the basis of environmental effects. Now, I'm recommending specific things. I want to start with this. Number 12, this is directly out of the ordinance passed August 7th of 2019, San Diego County. It's a 300-foot setback between any antenna and schools, childcare centers, hospitals, churches, et cetera. The only two words I added here are police stations. Please add that to the code. Now, but the reason you need to postpone this, it's premature. This is the first time the council has ever sat down and had a discussion, or an opportunity to have a discussion of this proposed code amendment, which you've only had for three days, not counting the weekend, and which is 71 pages long. There are lots of other good recommendations. Regulate the operation of cell antennas by limiting their output power to no more than 150 microwatts per square meter. One final thing that Mr. Hobbs failed to tell you is that the city is not preempted from regulating the operation of a cell antenna on any basis.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Our next speaker is Mark Edgar. Mark Edgar. Following Mark Edgar is Robyn Durston.
Hello. My name's Mark Edgar. I've lived in Elk Grove for 15 years, and I want to thank you two. You guys did a beautiful job with your research, your recommendations to the council, and I'm in support of it. And what I also appreciate is all the opposition I've heard tonight. But what I've heard is, it's spoken with emotion and not facts. They're wearing shirts that 5G, but I think, and maybe this is where you could correct me, I heard from AT&amp;T, it's a 4G installation on a, on a small cell tower. What this does for you, and I heard, you know, revenue shouldn't be talked about, but it's taking a fixed asset that Elk Grove has invested, and it's putting antennas on it, that's now monetizing fixed assets for you. Maybe it goes into the general fund, maybe it's used for women and children. I don't really know. It's up to you to decide. But it's, it's bringing revenue to you. By also approving this tonight and going with the small cell or the larger cells with the pictures that they've shown, it's putting Elk Grove in a position, when 5G does happen, you're ready to go. You're not behind. We all know that data, everybody is hungry for data, whether it's streaming TV, video, movies on our devices, our tablets. It's not going away. We've had 2G, 3G, 4G. Next is gonna be 5G. Small cell is bringing it closer, and the importance of the, how I see the, the importance of the small cell and the closer proximity is latency. Have you ever used Google Maps in your driving, and you've driven past an intersection and it says you now need to turn right? Well, that's, that's the delay. When those antennas are closer, that latency decreases, and it's a more real-time. I don't know where it's going, but 12 years ago, when Apple introduced the iPhone, 12 years later, we had no idea that this would be a camera, a video device, a GPS golf course device for playing golf, using all of it for your exercising, tracking where you've run. My wife uses it to track my daughters. In 12 years, 10 years from now, with this new technology that's coming, and it's gonna happen, and it's coming across the country, how will it impact the police department, the fire department, medical services? Technology and innovation will happen because of this. And again, your decision, you guys make it on facts, not on emotion, and position Elk Grove to be ahead of the curve, not behind the curve, and a leader and not a follower. And thank you for my time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Robyn Durston. Following Robyn Durston is Ernesto Espinoza. Robyn Durston, come on up, please. Ernesto, get ready.
Good evening, Council. I'm gonna read from Environmental Health Trust website. "Clear Evidence of Cancer Concludes U.S. National Toxicology Program." The U.S. government did a 25 million U.S. government national toxicology program study of cellphone radiation in animals, and they invited an expert panel to peer review the data. And they, this expert panel peer reviewed the data, and they voted to strengthen the conclusions that cellphone radiation caused health effects in rats and mice. And they voted that the malignant tumors found in the heart of male rats clear evidence of carcinogenicity, and in addition to heart and brain cancers, statistically significant increased numbers of tumors are found in other organs, including the prostate gland, pituitary gland, adrenal gland, liver, and pancreas. So... This animal evidence, together with extensive human evidence, shows increased risk of gliomas of the brain and vestibular chianoma in humans exposed to prolonged radiofrequency radiation, largely from cell phones, especially if the exposure begins at a young age, coupled with a rising incidence of brain cancers in young people in the U.S., conclusively confirms that radiofrequency radiation is a category-one human carcinogen. This is from Anthony Miller, M.D., Professor Emeritus Dalalana School of Public Health, University of Toronto, who has served as an advisor to the World Health Organization. So this is just for cell phones. It's not for 5G or cell, 4G. And there's been international petitions signed by hundreds of scientists around the world against 5G or 4G for the saying it causes cancer. And I urge you to vote to delay this or reject it, join the lawsuit, but the mayor's rejecting 5G. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Thank you, appreciate it. Next speaker is Ernesto Espinoza. Following Ernesto is Christine Esger.
Hi, Council. First time here. I am a little bit nervous. I took some notes, but I didn't expect this type of emotional response, so I'm gonna freestyle it. Because wow, I was really, really surprised. I understand that it's always a big topic whenever the children are involved. That what I'm concerned with most is the facts, right, and scientific facts, okay? Emotions, I understand, they're very powerful, and then they can hold a lot of weight, especially when people that we respect, such as doctors, are describing or talking about what we feel or what we believe. Now, I bring up doctors because I understand that a nice young lady had an example of a doctor here who was speaking against 5G, that type of technology, and I'm not gonna argue the fact that these don't emit radiation. Technology emits radiation. There's several things that emit radiation. And to another gentleman's point about providing cellphone guidelines or restrictions so we know how to responsibly use them, to his point, the cellphone companies, they make it pretty clear, because I've read in the fine print, that you don't have to hold the phone right to your face. And that came, that just reminded me, when that gentleman had illustrated that earlier. And what, the point I'm trying to make is, it's not, when people talk about penetrating the trees and penetrating the leaves, it's not the radiation. It's the signal. The radiation is just an offshoot of that. Now, it is harmful if it's, the closer it is to you. And the point I'm gonna make is, today CBS 10 ran a story, and Dr. Gerald Buschberg, you guys can look it up, he's a UC Davis doctor. We all, UC Davis doctors are great. We've got examples of people in here who've had very personal encounters with him. And he said specifically that the type of radiation that is emitted is line of sight. What that means is it's just going straight out. So if it's 10, 20 feet up, it's only getting straight out 10, 20 feet. As it leaves, it's exponentially weaker. So it's not 10 times out, it doesn't get 10 times weaker, it's 10 square weaker. So significantly drop off the further you are. What that means is, unless somebody's gonna climb up the tower and hug that puck, it's not gonna make a difference. It's not gonna do anything. You're, I would argue the fact that you do more damage to you and your children by allowing them... them to hold the phone against their body 24 hours a day and on the screen. That's my argument. And if you're really concerned, I don't have much time, I want to go into the savings, this guy had some savings, very good points, I would add on to that, the savings could come from not just, you know, co-locating, but when we get, we get to the point where we're on lights and we can put sensors that not just opt-in timers, but can sense when it's dark to turn them off, even fraction sooner can save money over the city. Think about trash cans, that when they're full, a sensor compacts it down, and you know, they're ready to go, when it's full, another sensor comes, we'll call the worker to come and empty it. That saves down on emissions, that saves down on carbon emissions. There are tons of other benefits to that.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
I wish I could go further and further. Thank you, but...
Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Christine Esquera.
I urge you to vote. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Following Christine is Ally Perez.
Hi, I'm Christina Esquera. I've only been a resident from Elk Grove for about four years, but I've been in the Sacramento Valley for 19 years. The big thing for me, I hear everyone's health concern, I totally understand, I can sympathize it, but this is the day and age where there are active shooters. So, you think about that. Everyone thinks about health, but if we get shot and killed at Walmart tomorrow on Bruceville, what's going to happen? We won't be around to be healthy, and we're all proposing against it. It makes me sad, because what happens if you can't call 911? You can't call your child if there's an active shooter at Elk Grove Unified School District. This is one of the big school districts in the actual area. We have the most students, the most schools. So, I know there's connectivity issues, it doesn't matter what carrier, it doesn't matter, but my thing is peace of mind, people. There's too many things at stake. You're worried about the health, you're worried about this. The small cell site is just helping people get connected with people they love the most. Do you want to be that person that you can't call your grandchild, you can't call your mom because you're dying at Walmart because everyone said not to vote on the small cell site? That's all I've got to say. I'm not trying to get technical, just want to keep it personal, that I have four children that attend Elk Grove Unified School District, and I'll be damned if I cannot communicate with them. And this is why I say vote for the small cell sites. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ally Perez is our next speaker. Patty Leckowitz follows.
Good evening. My name is Alice Perez. I work for AT&amp;T, I want full disclosure on that. Two years ago, I started a conversation with your city. Why? Because in your plans for community safety, you say very specifically that you want to increase citywide broadband capacity for public safety purposes. In addition to that, part of your plan is that you want to be a smart city. That's all on the basis of broadband accessibility. Small cell is a way to deliver that accessibility to your city, and it helps your communities by allowing your students to study. It's Medicare, it's public safety, it's all the accessibility that you're talking about. Your surrounding cities, West Sacramento, City of Sacramento, Ranch of Cordova, Citrus Heights, Folsom, Roseville, they have all approved this. If this was not good for the city, and believe me, they're not making a lot of money on this, AT&amp;T doesn't make money on this. What are we trying to do? We're trying to increase capacity, excuse me, that's very disrespectful. We are trying to increase capacity, and we are trying to bring accessibility. That is exactly what we're trying to do. Your staff has worked very hard on this, your planning commission has approved it to come to you, and your staff is recommending it. So based on that, I'm asking you to take the emotions out of this evening and vote in favor of the service that's going to help your city truly be a smart city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Patty Leckowitz. Following Patty is Erica Winon.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Patty Leckowitz, and I'm not a scientist, an engineer, I'm not a doctor or lawyer, but I am a concerned parent and grandparent that needs to know that if my family is being subjected, what my family is going to be subjected to is safe. Members of our group have been asking Verizon, the FCC, and various governmental agencies to provide evidence that the specific conditions that we're being subjected to are safe. None of these parties have been willing or able to provide the evidence. The only logical conclusion is that they don't have it. Over the past few months, we've had plenty of evidence suggesting that we will be harmed by the antennas in our neighborhoods. Hundreds of credible studies and thousands of experts are warning of the dangers of wireless radiation, and we were looking specifically at 5G. However, we've now discovered with the installation of 4G towers over in the pocket area that are primed for the 5G technology, and the, we find that there is this tie. So when people want to look at us wearing our 5G shirts, it is relative to the 4G technology as well, due to its proximity to the homes. So moving it to the side yard is going to do two things in the design. The map that they presented earlier showed an entire street that would be void of a tower. However, the tower would be at the end of the street on the side of the houses. So the property values of the houses on the interior would have higher value if one was concerned with the location of the tower. People would be less likely to buy the homes that are closer to the tower. So there's a distinct advantage in that one map that was shown. The guidelines, we all received generic statements regarding FCC guidelines that we got from a lot of different people. FCC regulates everything, and you're all making your decision based on the statements from AT&amp;T or anybody else that they meet those guidelines. However, there's nobody testing, there's nobody going out to measure a particular tower and its emissions to a second-story window where children are living, if that's still within the guidelines. The emissions do dissipate, but when you're talking about within 20 to 30 feet of a house, they're very high emissions, and you cannot enjoy your yard because those emissions are at that level that are still toxic. On the actual poll, it says may exceed FCC limits. There is a warning label. They haven't talked about it tonight, but it is, I can give you a copy of the label that's actually on the polls in our neighborhood. I had two questions. Is there a map of the actual locations of the site, of the proposed towers? Is there an actual map that's available? Who ensures that the towers, that the towers conform? Who is doing that?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Eric Windheim. Following Eric is Pamela Marquez.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Eric Windheim. I'm a building biology and environmental consultant and electromagnetic radiation specialist, trained and certified by the International Institute for Building Biology and Ecology, and I am a graduate of the Radio Frequency Safety Officer Course accredited by the Institute for Electronic and Electrical Engineers. I reviewed the staff report, and I find it deficient. The first thing I'd like to do is call up that diagram that shows the side yard, because I couldn't find that diagram in the staff report. Is there any way that you can pull up that image of the side yard? This is very important. You know, the red and the green?
It's not in there.
You can stop the clock, please.
Okay. So the red and the green, the poles won't be in front of the house? Yeah, that's great, but I'm going to point out...
I can tell you the clock.
Sorry. If you put the antennas on the side yard, it's going to be closer to the bedrooms, and the second-story bedrooms is where it really is going to hurt. Because you're going to hear people speak a little later on tonight where they've got poles, and you know, you probably have this thing here, so take a look at it. And if you look at this page here, you'll see what their view is outside their bedroom window. 60 feet away is a Verizon 4G small antenna. And it's only one-half to four-and-a-half percent of the FCC limit, but you're going to hear about their pain, suffering, and hopefully no injury. But their houses are already marked for property devaluation. Now, this diagram here clearly shows that when you have a second-story house close to an antenna, oh, the radiation level is so much higher at the second story, like about eight times. You know, six to eight times higher at the second story than it is at the ground where they take the measurements, where they admit that it's the lowest. So, you know, how close can a cell tower be to a side yard? Side yards are very narrow compared to the front yard. So is it possible that the antenna could be, instead of 60 feet away where we know it hurts people, maybe it's only 50, 40, 30, or 20 feet away from the antenna on the sidewalk pole? Yes. So I suggest that you can't vote on this until you can tell us how close that antenna will be to a side yard bedroom window. Because we already know that the FCC limit does not protect people at 60 feet. The only thing it protects is the wireless industry. And when people hurt, they lose their sleep, they lose their job, maybe they lose their mortgage, and they lose their health. Can you guarantee that they'll behave in a law-abiding manner? Are you willing to see them come in here? And how will the FCC regulations protect you from them? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pamela Marquez. Pamela Marquez. Following camera is Aaron McMahone.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Pamela Marquez. In 2016, a review was conducted on the effects of radiofrequency electromagnetic radiation on sperm function. There is a highly relevant analysis, as many people keep their cellphones in their pockets in close proximity to their genitals. Among the total, among the total of 27 studies investigating the effects of RFEMR on the male reproductive system, negative consequences of exposure were reported in 21. Within these 21 studies, 11 of the 15 that investigated sperm motility reported significant declines. Seven of seven that measured the production of reactive oxygen species, ROS, documented elevated levels, and four of five studies that probed the DNA damage highlighted increased damage due to the RFEMR exposure. This is just another of many well-documented effects of RIS exposure. What's worse, an idle cellphone in a pocket only emits a significant amount of radiation every 20 seconds or so, every time it pings to locate the nearest cell antenna. By contrast, individuals living near a cell antenna will be subjected to much higher levels of constant exposure in their testes and the rest of their bodies. This exposure will endanger our health and the health of future generations to come. The telecoms, the FCC, and the city of Elk Grove continue to ignore research that clearly demonstrates we will be harmed by this 4G, 5G technology. The only real question is why? Is it ignorant? Is it malevolence? Or is it just about the money? Whatever, the reason, they clearly do not care about the health or the public. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Aaron, come on up. Following Aaron is Noah Davidson.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Aaron McMahon. I am not a resident of the city of Elk Grove, I'm a resident of the city of Sacramento. And I believe that what sets me apart from everybody else in this room is I do have a small cell antenna out in front of my house. About eight months ago, Verizon installed a small cell antenna about five feet away from our property line and 60 feet away from our house. We didn't think much of it at the time until we saw a story in the news about a cell antenna in the city of Ripon, California, where multiple children and staff started randomly showing up with cancer. And that's really where our story begins. And once we began looking into the subject and doing a little bit of research, we became extremely concerned. I'm going to go off the cuff. I really hope you guys understand the decision you're about to make possibly tonight. Sacramento did not allow us to, my family did not have this opportunity. Verizon did not give us fair warning. There was a sign that shut up on our door one day that basically asked us to keep the street clear for three days. Came home one day, there was a cell antenna out in front of my house. After we saw the story, we started doing research, like I said. Since then, our lives has changed dramatically. I have a six and a three-year-old daughter, and because of our concerns, we have removed them from their bedroom. Mr. Eric Windham is speaking about my house. We put up shielding. I can't speak on the science involved, I can just tell you that the last eight months of my life and my family's has been a nightmare. General from AT&amp;T, I will totally agree with, the city of Sacramento has multiple cell antennas, and there's more to come. Since we have learned this, I have attended multiple city council meetings in the city of Sacramento. We corresponded with the FCC. Verizon, pretty much anybody that would listen to our story until they all shut down on us and just basically turned a blind eye. The FCC stopped corresponding with us. Verizon's corporate attorney reached out to us and basically told us our pockets weren't deep enough to fight them. And our city council has pretty much turned their back on us. You have an opportunity tonight to stand up for your constituents and make a stand against AT&amp;T and all of these telecom companies that do not care about the city of Elk Grove, they do not care about your constituents. Please, I urge you to listen to your constituents' concerns, take the time to make an informed decision, do not make the same mistake Mayor Steinberg and the city of Sacramento council has made. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Noah Davidson. Following Noah is Edgar Calderon.
So the first thing I want to say is that the AT&amp;T representative has misled you about the distinction between 4G and 5G. Darren, I think you picked up on this. We are currently in the fifth generation of wireless technology. These antennas that are being installed are 5G antennas, even if they're emitting, currently emitting a 4G frequency, they will soon be emitting a 5G frequency. You are voting on 5G right now, not 4G. My name is Noah. I live in the Sacramento area where 5G is currently being installed. I am here to tell you that 5G is an absolute nightmare for residents, and voting to implement 5G in Elk Grove will be a terrible decision that will bring you nothing but wrath from your constituents. In late December, a cell antenna was installed outside my family's home at roughly the same height as our second story. The antenna has a 360-degree radiation pattern, is radiating directly into my niece's bedroom window. Shortly after the antenna was installed, my nieces began experiencing health problems. Other members of my family have also experienced health problems since the antenna was installed. I've started an activist group in Sacramento to oppose the placement of cell antennas near people who do not want them, not against 5G entirely. Other families have also been harmed by the recently installed antennas near their homes. We regularly attend city council and were featured on CBS News last night. Our group is constantly growing as more antennas go up and more people realize that 5G means an antenna will likely be installed near their home. The masses are still not aware of this fact. Our group is not the only group opposing 5G. There are at least 84 activist groups similar to my own across the U.S., even more internationally. The Wall Street Journal recently featured an article highlighting the resistance to 5G. Roughly 25 cities have passed or proposed ordinances to restrict the placement of small cells near schools or in residential neighborhoods. Many of these cities specifically cited public health concerns as a reason. You need to have your attorney look into that. Hundreds of, New Hampshire recently passed a bill to investigate the health impact of 5G. Hundreds of doctors and scientists around the world are warning about the dangers of 5G. Put simply, more and more people are waking up to the health problems 5G will bring. Health is not the only problem with 5G. The reduction of property values and home sellability resulting from cell antennas is well-established by the realtor industry. No one is going to be happy if the city of Elk Grove allows Verizon and AT&amp;T to take money directly out of their pockets. This is another thing I would have you, have your attorney look into, something that I did not hear him address, because I personally am convinced massive waves of class-action lawsuits are on the horizon. More importantly, 5G represents a total destruction of the rights of your constituents, the rights to life, to liberty, and to property.
Thank you, sir.
These are core American values, and you would be wise not to tread on them.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edgar Calderon. Following Edgar Calderon is Sharon Lyons.
Is that Edgar Calderon you said, mayor?
Yes, sir. It's you.
Good evening. My name is Edgar Calderon. I'm a resident of Elk Grove for the last 20 years. Also a member of SERT, which is the Community Emergency Response Team, and I'm here to support your decision to have small cells, because that's technology that could save many lives. So I know it's going to be a difficult decision for you, but if you think of the people that you... you're gonna be saving, you should think. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Lines. Coming up, Sharon. Following Sharon is Kim Glazier.
Could someone turn off, turn off the computer for me, please? I'm very sensitive to it. It insults my brain and my body. Thank you. Remind me to get my key. Thank you for turning that off. First thing, this statement was in the staff report. Minimize negative visual noise and aesthetic impacts and protect the general safety, welfare, and quality of life of the community. These small cells will not do that. Where's the need, the proof of need for more coverage? I'm having trouble reading because I am sensitive and I can't imagine what that family is going through. Because I know the hell it causes, so I will continue as best I can. Cell antenna towers are all over Elk Grove right now. From the estimation, there's over ninety cell towers and antennas already. They're, these small tap cell towers just move, just, I'm sorry, I can't read my notes. Just move micro ra, my, I can't do it. Just move micro radiation closer and stronger to our homes and us. This project does not address distance from, from pole to the home. I am asking that no small cell, cell antennas, 4G, 5G, whatever, in residential areas at all, including the rural residential in this city, deny the use of them in our, in our home areas. The MLA page two will allow small cells on traffic signals, bus stops, flags, banners, et cetera, not just streetlight poles as shown on Exhibit B that is in there, page two. The MLA on page three can grant co-location by a third party on any existing city facility, and I'm assuming a pole, occupied by a a current cell, cell, small cell. That would double the amount of microwave radiation emitted at that location. That would bad, be very bad for the citizens. It's doubling up on it. We don't need that. It's already bad enough. The MLA page 111, 111, states any resident, is any residential zoning, including Agress, cited on map Exhibit A, that's the green map with the little red things on it, little orange things, page 124, is approved by the MLA automatically once it is signed. That means the folks that live near there in the neighborhoods, no public notification of this at all.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comment. Our next speaker is Kim Glazier.
Please deny this project.
Kim Glazier. Kim, come on down, please. Following Kim is Nam.
Good evening, council members. My name is Kim Glazier, and while I'm not here in this capacity, I work as an environmental scientist with the State of California EPA. I have been a victim of a small cell tower called a smart meter. I have been, had severe health issues due to smart meters that were installed approximately 2009 in Sacramento. And my symptoms worsened over about a two-to-three-year period, and they included headaches, heart palpitations, vision loss, agitation, brain fog, severe insomnia, among, among other issues. And being very health-minded, I didn't understand why I was having these issues until finally one evening, the power outage, we had a power outage, and we lost power. And I slept the best I slept in years that night. And I finally realized that this was an issue with a smart meter, which I had been concerned about to begin with, but I had not been able to pinpoint it. I finally got relief that night and realized that this was a really important issue that needs to be addressed. So I went and worked with SMUD. I was there probably twenty to thirty times, testifying. We had a workshop. We got the SMUD to do a workshop. We were able to convince them through the tech, through the information and the science about the dangers that these, these, basically cell antennas caused. And they allowed then people all over Sacramento and all over the SMUD area to exchange the smart meters for analog meters and to go back. We want that ability to educate SMUD. We want you to take the time to become educated here tonight. Maybe you can't make your decision based on health issues, but you can make the same decisions to either eliminate or, or reduce, or even not, not have cell towers based on aesthetic reasons. You can do it on all sorts of reasons. You don't have to say it's a health reason, but the, I mean, they're darn ugly anyway, and who wants one in their front yard or side yard? So I'm just saying, you have an incredible opportunity here. You don't have to wait until people are harmed. You don't have to wait until there is an issue, as, as SMUD found out. And, and now they have had to change back. They've had to totally revise what they're doing. They've had to do a lot, make a lot of changes. And you have an incredible opportunity here to do the right thing for the people of Elk Grove. So I really, I, I encourage you to either delay or just reject this 5G disaster.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am is our next speaker. Calling ma'am is Julie Ostache.
Hi, my name is Nam, and I've been studying health for ten years now. And there's a wealth of information on the health, adverse health effects of this wireless technology, whether it be 2G, 3G, 4G, smart meters, Wi-Fi. All this technology is really toxic, and we don't discuss about it enough. From headaches, memory loss, inability to learn, irritation, digestion issues, up to DNA damage, cancers, breast cancer. Men who put their cell phones on their hip have bone loss in that area. It, there's a list of health hazards. And so it doesn't matter what, what's gonna happen as far as delaying it or just, just vote no on it, or delay it somehow so that you guys can understand what the actual problem here. Why cannot, why does the FCC tell us not to talk about health? There's a problem with that. Why does the FCC tell us not, there's gonna be no environmental effects when there's tremendous amount of knowledge with that, too? Why are we being forced to not talk about these things? There's a problem with that. Cigarettes were safe at one point. Lead was safe. Adversives are safe. Monsanto's Roundup was safe, right? All this stuff is not safe. Are we gonna wait ten, twenty years before we all come to consensus that this technology is not safe? And we need to educate people on how to use it properly for, for safety? That's, that's usually after the fact, right? What's, what's been happening? We don't wanna do that now. We wanna be able to realize that, that you, or delay this vote tonight to get more information, find ways to oppose this, and not allow this thing to be in the city. Because health is the only thing we really have. If we don't have that, we cannot function or do anything else. What happens when you can't learn? What happens when you can't remember? What happens when you can't sleep? When you don't have your health, you cannot function. When you, when you, when you get cancer or some other diseases, you're in debt. People, people go homeless because of this, because of health. Because the health industry is corrupt, the FCC is corrupt, the EPA is corrupt. We all know this, but we have to do something about this. If, if everybody stands up for what's right and what's for just, for just, what's just, we wouldn't be having these issues with all these health concerns. So I urge you, delay or find a way to oppose this. Aesthetics is not gonna look beautiful in the city. When I first came to the city, that's what I noticed, all the trees, right? Now we're gonna have a cellphone tower right next to a tree. I don't want that. So please, any way you can.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Julie Ostache. Julie, come on down. Following Julie is Randy Becker.
Who's next?
Julie's up. Yep.
Hello, my name's Julie Ostache, and first of all, I wanted to speak a little bit about what Mark Graham said. Follow-up on him. He informed me that the city attorney wrote the entire proposed code amendment without consulting with the city attorney of Mill Valley or Petaluma. Both of these places passed ordinances last September to regulate cell, cell antennas. And apparently, the city attorney did attempt to talk with them, but did not actually talk with them. So why would they not first consult with these other ordinance, communities that passed ordinances regulating this? I think that's very important. Now I'll read what, what I have to say, but before that, I wanna say aesthetics and people's health. What is it? And why can't we talk about it? And yes, it is emotional, and it's got nothing to do with connectivity, because we connect just fine right now. What we don't have is health. And that's what I'm speaking about, because that's more important than bringing this into the homes of people. People's homes where you're supposed to be safe, and this is not safe. 5G will harm the physical, mental, and emotional health of all humanity in life. There are over 10,000 scientific papers, most of which were published, or many of which were published in the, before the 1970s, done by the military, documenting the detrimental effects of radio frequency microwaves. And we're talking 2G, 3G, 4G, and then no make no mistake about it, 4G is 5G on the, on the table. Yet these studies are being rejected and ignored because the industry influenced, influenced claims of safety by mega corporations who have captured our regulatory agencies like the FCC via revolving door appointments and lobbyists. Claims that have absolutely no valid, impartial, peer-reviewed studies behind them, zero. The ramped-up push for rapid installation of 5G is nothing more than a telecommunications industry's attempt to control, influence communities, insert their authority, and produce tremendous financial gain for them. I don't believe anyone here wants to hurt or harm or cause suffering on any people or biological life, especially children who are the most vulnerable. Allowing 5G technology to proceed without adhering to precautionary principles and turning a blind eye is paramount to being complicit in the damage that will inevitably occur. You have a social responsibility. And that responsibility is to, to protect the public from exposure to harm, when studies have found an association between increased risk of cancer and other neurological diseases and conditions from living in close proximity to these transmitter stations. Cell towers, radio frequency radiation. Studies show damage to DNA, which we know is a pre-cancerous cancer. How many people do you know who have battled or are battling cancer? These are your friends, your loved ones, your children, your grandchildren, your coworkers. 5G is even worse than 4G.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we need to do that.
It looks like Mr. Becker has cleared out, so our last speaker is Anthony Gilmore. Our last speaker is Anthony Gilmore. He bowed out. Thank you, Mr. Becker.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I'm Anthony Gilmore. I grew up in Sacramento. I moved to Elk Grove in 2001, purchased a home. I work for AT&amp;T. I'm a senior project manager for AT&amp;T Mobility. I manage a team of professionals that install indoor and outdoor small cells. This phone, I just dropped my daughter at college. I track her with this. I see everybody in here on their phone, right now. Without a cell site, you wouldn't be doing this, right now. Those radios that are on the pole, they're five watt max radios, 1900 LTE. You will not find a 5G cell site by AT&amp;T anywhere. Guarantee you. Technology's not being used right now. And when it does, it's gonna be for IoT, Internet of Things, so you can see what your Samsung refrigerator has inside of it, turn your microwave off and on. But right now, even in Kaiser Hospital, go to Golden One Center, I have a system in there, small cell. That's what allows you to use your cell, take photos, internet, text seamlessly, the small cell that's in Golden One, the small cell that's in Kaiser. And it's only 1900 4G LTE. You'd have to literally climb that pole, wrap yourself around that antenna for an extended amount of time, couple of days maybe, to be affected by what they're calling radiation that doesn't exist. It's a signal. It's 1900 megahertz. The EME studies show that we are 50% below FCC safety levels at any given point, any given system. Why keep Elk Grove in the dark? I'm building systems now at campus settings in San Francisco where a young female was attacked. She couldn't dial 911, no coverage. It's a shame that now we have coverage there after the fact. There are dead spots and holes all in Elk Grove, and all over Sacramento. It's the future. There's no 5G. It's just 4G LTE, and it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this point, I want to close public comment and invite the applicant to come back up. What? What, one more speaker?
Yes.
Okay, hand it in, please. Okay, any more speakers? Please sign up the blue form. All right, this is the last speaker.
Good evening. Dante Williams with Verizon Wireless. I'm the Municipal Engagement Specialist with the Small Cell Strategy Team. I would like to say thank you to Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume, council, and all the staff members. We're not in love with this policy, and that's the point, right? There were a lot of compromises made on both sides so that we could come to a policy that we could move forward with, something that both sides were not gonna be 100% happy with, but that there was a legislative compromise so that there would be a digital future guaranteed to the people in Elk Grove. And that's what we're here today to discuss. I know it's very emotional. I had a bunch of prepared statements. I'm tired of hearing my own voice. I've spoke in front of this body and several bodies several times, so I just wanted to read some information from an article. "How 5G Can Save Lives by Aiding First Responders." This is a CNET article that was written August 20th, 2019. And in this article, there's a section, "Augmented Reality, Augmented Reality Firefighting Helmets." "It can be pitch black in a broad day, broad daylight inside a home with all the lights on," said Kirk McKenzie, Captain and Technologist for Consumers Fire Department 73C in Elk Grove, just south of California's capital of Sacramento. "I've been unable to see my hand in front of my face many times. That's where San Francisco-based startup Quake comes in. Its technology lets firefighters see through smoke, toxic gas, and darkness to find victims, comrades, and spot falling objects, holes, and floors that would otherwise, otherwise not be visible." The future is now. The future's today. And you talk to any of your first responders and you ask them, are we gonna be safer with less technology and less connectivity? If there's a situation, an emergency situation, are we gonna be more safe with less technology, less connectivity? You know, I try not to get emotional. This is supposed to just be a business for me, but I think about these things. This is why I'm in this business. I wanna see these things happen because I wanna make sure that I'm able to reach my loved ones. I wanna make sure that my first responders have all the information and technology at their fingertips to be the most effective. to be the most effective they can possibly be. And I want to see that in every single community that I live, work, and play in. And that's important. And so today, what you guys are voting on is how we move forward in that path, not if we move forward in that path. And you're maintaining control. You've done a great job of having a very, very tough policy that really confirms that you have control over how this will be deployed and where it will be deployed. But what you're actually ushering in is how it will be deployed and where it will be deployed to benefit your citizenry. Telemedicine, healthcare. All these things will be impacted.
Appreciate your time. Thank you for the comment. Seeing that there are no additional speakers signed up, I want to close public comment and invite the applicant to come back up for closing.
Good evening. Thank you again for your consideration of this matter. We heard a lot of concerns this evening, mostly around health. As was mentioned by the city attorney and Councilmember Hume. The FCC has exclusive jurisdiction over health matters. We definitely respect folks' concerns. Health is number one, and we recommend folks to conduct the research and address the appropriate jurisdictions regarding health. I'm here, I'm not a health expert, I'm, you know, I'm here to talk about the application, the code amendment, the MLA, and the proposed facilities. Echoing what Dante from Verizon said. You know, I'd say that this, these code amendments and the MLA, they thread the needle. AT&amp;T's current proposals work with this ordinance, and we support the code amendments and the MLA accordingly. And we've been at this, you know, for so long, for nearly two years, that we need to move forward. And I think that's the best way to proceed. With these, you know, 15 facilities, the city will be able to establish protocol. They'll be able to learn more about the facilities. They'll be able to build the relationship with the small cell facilities and how these things might be deployed, and then sharpen the tools for addressing them in the future. We're dealing with a relatively small deployment that is well-regulated. Any additional facilities are going to have to go through a very rigorous process. I do this for a living, I attend these council hearings all the time, evaluating a lot of different processes, and this is a rigorous one. And we want to move forward with it, we're ready, so, thank you.
I've got a quick question. Why now?
Why now what?
Why now? Why push it now?
Why? Well, gosh, we didn't, we started pushing it two years ago, we probably would have pushed it sooner, but the city didn't have a code to address small cells, as the city attorney mentioned. The FCC issued their order almost a year ago, that was implemented in January, essentially, you know, requiring cities to create code around small cells, especially if they want to regulate aesthetics, like Elk Grove wants to. So here we are, at long last. And we look forward to addressing the, to meeting the demands and addressing the needs of your citizens.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
At this point, I want to declare public hearing closed, and I do have a question for Mr. Abalag. A thought occurred while we were talking about the corner lot. Let's say the corner lot backs up to the side of another house. Would, how would the front of the house apply to the house that it backs up to? Do you follow what I'm trying to describe?
Yeah, so the way the code is written, you could still have a front yard that faces a proposed installation, because that would be on the side yard, but it wouldn't be directly adjacent. The pole would effectively be across the street, but across the street from the front yard of a home.
Okay, let me see if I understand that correctly. So if a corner lot backs up to the side lot of another house, then it would be the pole across the street, not on that corner lot?
There would never be one directly in the front yard of a home, but it would be possible that it would be visible from the front of a home.
So it could potentially be on the side of the corner house, but you can visually see it from the front of the house that it backs up to?
I would say across the street from.
Yeah, maybe, you know, maybe I'm going to have to draw you a picture here, because, you know, it just occurred to me when we were discussing the corner lot, and I get that, right? I get that front, that front section. What I'm trying to say is if it's on the side of the yard, right? The house that could be right directly behind that corner lot could have the face of the house, the front of the house facing towards the street.
Let me see if I can get a diagram that might help you. I think I understand your, it's not shown here, but if, Sean, if you could bring that back up again.
I'm going to try to pull up the zoning code. That diagram, will that help you?
Uh...
You don't want that?
Yes, if you could bring that up.
Can't make the computer work, though?
Yeah. I think the situation that Mayor Lee is referring to, if you have a corner lot adjacent to an interior lot, that interior lot, yes.
Right.
Exactly, that's exactly it. There you go, a planner.
So I guess then, in looking at the diagram that I just drew him.
Yes.
We would maybe have to make a determination as to what constitutes adjacency?
Yes, so in...
So like, let's say Lot C.
Yes, Lot C.
Was a house facing out onto A Street.
Right.
On the side yard of Lot 1.
Yes.
How far away does that pole have to be in order to not be considered adjacent to Lot C's front yard?
The strict interpretation of our code, it could not go past the lot boundary between Lot 1 and Lot C. It also couldn't be in that front yard setback of Lot 1, so there would, based on 110-foot lot depth, there would be a, about an 80-foot window of Lot 1 where that antenna could be placed.
Makes sense.
Can you repeat that again?
Mr. Ab, yeah, if you hop up, you can use the mouse to show folks where that might be.
So if Lot C in this diagram, if Lot C was a residential lot, we turn this to red up to this property boundary, and there would be a green section left of about 80 feet from this property boundary down to where the prohibition would begin again.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you. All right, the show deliberation, members? Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to start this off, well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out on this issue. You know, there's a lot of passion involved, obviously, on both sides. And I know staff has done the best job as they could to put together a document that I, you know, I think would go out as to the decision, I think it's a good product. We spent a lot of time, we've spent a lot of time, you know, and I really want to thank Mark Graham and his advocacy, because if it was not for him, I feel like we would be much less informed. And we started, remember, having a public workshop on it. Several meetings, conversations after that. I believe the mayor hosted another workshop with Supervisor Nataoli. So I would say we've put a lot of work into this, and I know, I'm sure my colleagues have, but I know I have too, done a lot of research into things, and we are, by law, we have some limitations on what we can do. And that's just the way government works. You have a local level, state level, federal level, and so we have to work within our boundaries. The option is to change the law federally, whether it's through Congress or, you know, on the executive branch. So those are other things, I think, tools that we have. But I want to, because there's a lot of two sides, and I think, you know, just a picture's worth a thousand words type of thing. Jason, if you could just tee up the, does Jason have it, Sean? Who's got it?
You know, it's pretty obvious, since we have a moment, that we're going to go pass the 10 o'clock rules. Council want to waive the 10 o'clock rule?
Yeah, please.
There's been some questions whether we're going to get to all the items, or we're going to hit all of them, or is there anything we're going to postpone?
I'd say bounce anything that's not time-sensitive.
You want to deal with that now? I know there is...
Shall we look through? We get...
So while he's getting the video, 10.3 is time-sensitive. That's a Voting Rights Act matter.
9.4 would be a quick item. If it moves forward, it is the public hearings to finalize some annexations for projects.
We can do 9.4, but Kara could probably go home, and we'll waive the staff presentation.
So 10.1 is probably up to the council, that's a residential short-term, the otherwise known as the Airbnb. If the council wants to hear that tonight, we're certainly prepared, but it's not particularly time-sensitive. But I know there were some, I'd say we bounced the council to go forward.
You know what? We have 10 people signed up for that, and it's, they've stayed since 10 o'clock here. So I'd like to keep that on the calendar.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So we'll do 10.1. 10.2 is civic center naming. I have to defer to other staff if that's time-sensitive, I don't know that it is.
That's not, that is not time-sensitive, it can move.
And as I mentioned, 10.3 is time-sensitive. Voting delegates for the League.
The brief item, it has a little bit of a time sensitivity, just for the League to hear who the representatives are, but it is a brief item.
Okay.
Well, just appoint the mayor.
So we're bouncing 10 to? We're bouncing 10 to then?
Yeah.
And then everything else is the same? Looks like it. And is there a motion to waive the 10 o'clock rule for those items?
Motion.
Still moved.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion? All right, second. Yes? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, both potential, all right. Let's continue.
Okay, so we're just going to play excerpt of it, but I just want to, I want to draw to your attention because I thought it was a balanced thing, and you're not going to hear the full balance, you're just going to hear a segment of it, and again, you know, with respect, all due respect to the technical experts that came to speak tonight, so if you could just tee us part up.
You have a timeframe that you wanted? It looks as though it's about a 15-minute clip.
No, it's just that last four minutes, I think.
Probably starting around 11, 12. Nine?
Nine, all right.
I'd probably go around nine.
We'll get it fired up here.
I may cut it off, but at least...
But you can, you can fast-forward if you like.
I just, I just...
I don't exactly know which portion.
We're going to get an ad for Crest.
The new solution is Crest gum and sensitivity.
New Crest gum and sensitivity starts treating...
Tonight's discussion on 5G technology is brought to you by Crest. Four out of five dentists recommend Crest.
You're being exposed to radiation right now. It's coming at you from both space and the soil, from water and food, your bo...
It's mostly not very much more than a couple of volts per meter that you measure in residential areas. So that's comparable to the amount of energy that comes out of an incandescent light bulb.
From all of the Wi-Fi exposure and 5G and the other types of exposure that we talked about, visible light and radio frequency, there should not be any adverse effects.
One thing often brought up is that cell phones are relatively new technology, and 5G is brand-new. How can we possibly already understand how they're affecting us?
Really, wireless telecommunications is actually the combination of three old technologies that we have a lot of experience with. It's the combination of the computer, the radio, and the telephone. We have been exposed to artificial radio frequency energies for over 100 years now, and we've been studying biological effects of RF energy for over 70 years, and have over 3,000 publications in the literature specifically devoted to biological effects of RF energy at various levels and various frequencies.
It's absolutely useless to do a lot of research, for instance, with the particular frequencies that 5G is going to use, to see whether those frequencies will result in any health effects, because they're not that much different from the frequencies that have been studied a lot already in the past.
Again, Moskowitz disagrees.
Thousands of peer-reviewed studies have found biologic and health effects from chronic exposure to non-thermal levels of microwave radiation and low-frequency fields.
There are several thousands of papers altogether that have studied the effects of non-ionizing radiation. There may be a couple of dozen papers that give some indications for a possible carcinogenic effect, but there are not very many studies that give some indications of a possible carcinogenic effect, certainly not thousands. So that's absolutely not true. Most of the studies that have been published do not show any indications at all for a carcinogenic or whatever health effect.
So we've got two people claiming to be experts who have access to the same collection of scientific research. Most of us aren't scientists studying this, so how do we know who to believe?
I go back to the literally dozens and dozens and dozens of these national and international panels that have been stood up over the last decade or two, that have brought together the experts with the necessary complement of expertise, with epidemiologists, with engineers, with microbiologists, with all of the necessary cadre of expertise necessary to really completely analyze the literature. Their view holds more weight than individual opinions, more than my opinion, more than any one scientist's opinion, or a collection of scientists that you can find and select on a tally.
And this is the crux of how you should approach things here. When faced with big, complicated scientific questions, scientific consensus is your best option. If you rely on just one person, you could hear this.
We have some indications from some studies that there might be an association with mobile phone use and increased risk of brain cancers.
But then also this.
If you look at a possible carcinogenic effect of radio frequency radiation, I'm more than 99% confident that there is no such effect.
And this is not a case of Van Rongen flip-flopping. It's an example of a scientist talking about science the way scientists talk about science. Deliberate, but not necessarily understood by non-scientists. To get the whole picture, you need more than a sound bite. So radiation can be scary and deadly, but according to so many reputable organizations, we just don't have good evidence cellphone radiation is causing us harm. It can heat up your body if it's powerful enough, which is why the FCC sets limits on it. But beyond that, right now, there's no good reason to think that it's doing anything else. And according to Bushberg, we have even less reason to be worried about 5G.
The nature of 5G and these so-called millimeter waves, they don't penetrate the body. In fact, they don't even penetrate beyond the skin surface. And so they can't get to our internal organs. There's no RF energy that is going to hit the liver or the spleen, or the lungs, or any of our internal organs. So I'm not really sure why people should be more concerned. If you had to have a concern, you should be least concerned, about 5G.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Jason. So, you know, as you can see, and look, you, look at the earlier parts too, because it talks about what many of the folks earlier talked about too. So I think it's fairly balanced, but the point is, what you heard earlier, there's so much information out there. We might as well be debating on climate change right now, you know, or, you know, or pro-choice or pro-life. I mean, as controversial as those issues are, I mean, we're barking down the same thing. A subject topic that, I'm not arguing climate change, all I'm saying is there's a lot, there's a lot of data out there from people that, people use data to make their arguments, cases for both sides. So, and here we are up here, we're not scientists, we're not ingen, actually, I am an engineer, but not that kind, not that kind of engineer. And we try to, we try to do as much research as we can to make the best decision we can. And to the folks earlier, I talked about, you know, for kids, absolutely. I mean, I'm a parent up here, a bunch of us are, and so, you know, I'm definitely concerned about this, as was when I used to make decisions about cell towers in general. So, but I'm, you know, we're moving forward with, or, you know, in my process, do as much research as I can, look at as much information as I can, seeing things like this. And it kind of sums it all up. I mean, that's CNBC, that's not AT&amp;T, that's not Singular, that's CNBC, if you don't trust... Okay, fine, but this is a... Folks, please. So we could trust nobody, that's fine, right? Then maybe I shouldn't trust you, right? And you should try, I mean, where does it end, right? So my point is, again, getting back to just doing the best research that we can and making the best decision that we can. And I don't have any confidence that if we delay this thing, there's going to be any other information that's going to make all of a sudden everybody go, "You know what? That's it, that's it, now we know, and we're comfortable going forward." I don't, I don't see that happening, because I just continue to see this research evolving. And as this, as it was said earlier in here, it's been years, they've been looking at this stuff, and they're still talking about these things. And we can, if you want to talk afterward, we could talk about deionizing or ionizing radiation, or levels of that. I mean, all kinds... of that. I mean, all kinds of things. Disrupting electrons makes it deionizing. I mean, these are all these things I've been learning about too. So again, I wanna thank Mr. Graham for educating me on all this as well. So...
Cigarette smoking?
I... I wanna just say, you know, we could talk about that too. I got some... I got some interesting stories on that one. But, so, and finally, I'll just say, there's people up here from Sacramento saying that Sacramento's been installing these things, and Rancho Codo's been doing it. So it's surrounding us regardless. So if we never... if we don't do anything, it's all around us anyway. So I don't know that... what are we... what are we saving by being the one insular... It's my turn to talk, please. I mean, I listened a long time to everybody else, and I like my moment, if I could. And if we're just gonna insulate ourselves, you know, I don't think... I don't see that being realistic too, because really, that means you don't go outside your home, because once you, you know, step outside the city, so to speak, you're succumbing to the things or exposing yourself to the very things you're concerned about. So, and then finally, listening to the concerns of residents, we tried, and this was early on, this council went forward with, you know, imposing more restrictions on AT&amp;T and Singular, which was the 500-foot separations, which was the no... no small cell within the front yards. And then that... we're absolutely insisting on transparency here. If people want to put it in the residential neighborhoods in those cases, then there's gonna be a notice that at least people will be aware. There's a notification that's required. So whether, you know, at least to the gentleman that talked about Sacramento, they didn't even know, there will be notification when those come forward. So I think we've taken prudent steps to try to do... to balance the information that we've known and try to make things as safe as possible for the community, but also enable us to have a city that is 21st century that will be able to support connected vehicles, autonomous vehicles, medical technology, our emergency responders. And on that quick note, in my role in emergency response and flood management, comms, communications, what is the number-one thing we wrestle with when there's a flood event. So, all that said, I, you know, I support this application this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my experience with approval or disapproval of cellphone antennas goes back almost 20 years to early days on the Planning Commission, when I forget who the provider was at the time. Oh, by the way, for the question about material connection to AT&amp;T, my only financial connection to AT&amp;T is the money they extract from me every month. So, but my experience with the approvals of cell phone towers goes back to that early days on the Planning Commission, as I said, and I voted to deny the application for a cellphone tower in Elk Grove Regional Park. That was when it first came to my attention that, according to the FCC, health concerns cannot be a reason to cite denial. I wasn't denying it for health concerns. I was denying it because I didn't want a big, old, ugly antenna in our beautiful park. And so therefore, it was upheld and wasn't challenged by the user, because eventually, my colleagues agreed with me. And let me start by saying that for those of you that feel the effects of electromagnetic radiation or radio frequency sensitivity, or any of the things that I believe that your effects and concerns are real and valid, and I appreciate you taking the time to come and share them with me. But in all of the research that I've done, nobody has a monopoly on the truth, and unfortunately, I don't believe the truth is settled on this item. There's a lot of conjecture. There's a lot of opinion, but there is no consequential irrefutable facts out there that I could find. Ma'am, public comment is closed.
Thank you. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So, anyway, so there's a lot of... people have a lot of strong opinions. I have to adopt a, what I consider a universalist ethical position, which is the greatest amount of good for the most amount of people with the least amount of harm for the fewest amount of people. And given the advancement of technology, you know, I have friends that control their entire houses while they're not even there, turning on lights, seeing what's in their refrigerator, starting their washing machines, you name it. How many people have Alexas or Series or whatever in their living rooms? Those are consuming Wi-Fi bandwidth space. Autonomous vehicles were brought up. Emergency responders were brought up. We have a real-time information center right behind us here that we... when a crime occurs or a traffic accident occurs, our traffic cameras send the signal. We can tap into our buses and get into the cameras on the buses and see the angles of what happened from those. All this is happening in real time. That's all bandwidth being consumed. We went from a society of having landlines and maybe with a wired computer to now having multiple tablets in multiple rooms from multiple users, all gaming, streaming, bandwidth that is being needed. And so I look at this as from not just a competitive edge of what everybody else is doing. I don't feel we need to keep up with the Joneses, but that our residents want to have that capability as well. They wanna... they want... they want that. They want to be able to connect it to the Internet of Things. And so I think we've struck a pretty hard bargain here. I can tell you that the providers are not necessarily happy with this. It's better than not having it, because it does streamline future approvals. But, you know, I was the one that mentioned to staff of not allowing in the front yards to... because for me, that's an aesthetic concern. So that is one thing that I would like to bring up to the council members, is tonight is the first time I've heard the possibility of allowing an antenna across the street from a front yard, which I believe is also an aesthetic concern and affects property values. And so I would like to have that written into the code. But all in all, I think we've used the tools at our disposal to establish a reasonable sense of spacing and non-proliferation of these, and so I too support the amendment.
Okay. Councilman Dick?
Thank you. Well, it's been a long night, folks. A lot of... a lot of comments on both sides. To piggyback on one of the items that Councilman Hugh brought up was the issue relative to side yard, how it affects front yards, but also what about backyards? Because there's some rear easements that potentially they could put these cells on too.
Say that again?
Rear easements. Sometimes there's rear easement lines that'll go through where they could put these on as well. That would be a concern as well. So I would like to see if we're gonna do that on... address the issue of the all-front yards as well as the side yard setbacks and rear easement setbacks as well as relative to where these are gonna be put. To the question relative to any financial relationship with AT&amp;T, I don't have any AT&amp;T stock, and I've never received any money from AT&amp;T, and my provider's Verizon. So, Mr. Williams, that's on your side of the house. You know, most of you know that I've been with PG&E for 45 years. I work on the electric side. I've worked on the distribution side, the transmission side. Electric magnetic field's been a huge issue for PG&E relative to things. And the verdict's still out there too. I mean, there's ways of measuring it, but the verdict's still out on the utility side of PG&E relative to power, and smud runs into the same issues. Do I believe there's people with sensitivities out there? Absolutely. I mean, I think all of our bodies are a little bit different. Some are allergic to different types of food. Some of us have allergies. Some of us don't. So I believe there are real symptoms that people have relative to this. I am concerned that, you know, that the data is not clear. Like most things, you can go in and get 10 doctors that'll tell you one thing and 10 doctors that'll tell you something else. So you can search for whatever answer you wanna find. Doesn't mean which one is right, because there isn't hard evidence on all that. I'm not a huge fan of what we have here. I think, you know, there has been compromises on both sides. I'll wait to hear the rest of the deliberation.
Great. Thank you, sir. You know, first, I wanna thank Mr. Graham for coming to every single council meeting in the last two years, just about every single one. I think you might have missed maybe one or two, but also sending us emails every single day. I've received at least one email from you a day, and I applaud you for coming to us two years ago about 5G when we didn't even know anything about it. So you, you know, I echo Mr. Seun's word in you educating us on this. So it's been two years since our staff have worked on this and to come up with an agreement and worked with providers like Verizon and AT&amp;T. And while, Mr. Graham, you and everybody else in here probably feel as if your voices weren't heard, I think you heard earlier that Verizon isn't necessarily in love with this agreement, and that I also know that AT&amp;T wasn't necessarily happy with this, and that Mr. Hobbs had stated earlier that they made concessions where they didn't want to. And the request was made that we didn't vote on this today and that we postponed it to next month. But I feel that if we did do that, we just wouldn't be able to make either side happy. And so, based off of the FCC orders, federal state laws, we had to do what we can and try to... try to come up with a compromise. And I feel that we came up with the best compromise that we can. And while both sides can't be happy, or is not happy, I think our Vice Mayor had said this once, "We didn't make anybody happy, so I think we did our job." So with that, I support moving this forward.
Thank you, councilmember. So, Mr. Graham, we've been on this journey for a very long time, and one thing I really appreciate about you is you're very cordial. You come into council meetings organized, and you try to be very succinct in your delivery. Because you're so passionate about it, and, you know, I know that sometimes for us, we get a little overwhelmed and cluttered with the argument in which you try to push forward. But, you know, I honestly have to say, I really appreciate your input. And as we sat together a couple weeks ago, I believe, and we discussed the current proposal, and, you know, I felt that what you... your input really made a difference. Had it not been for you and the individuals that came forward and provided the information and provided, you know, the council members and also staff, I think that we moved because of that. And I think that's real critical, because nothing is always a perfect picture. As you can see, we're split on this. As you can see, our advice from our city attorney is that there are certain things that we can do, and there are certain things that we can't. And I know you may disagree with the city attorney, but the honest truth is, we have a city attorney, and we paid a lot of money for him, so I trust the guy, you know. And that being the case, if you're gonna argue law, every day, I'm gonna favor the city attorney. And so, that being the case, you know, I feel that I am conflicted. And I hear many of the speakers who spoke tonight about the possible health effects. And I think I've shared with Mr. Graham and some of the members that I remember looking at a house, and I was concerned about EMFs. And, you know, I didn't buy the house, because the darn thing looks ugly, you know, in front of the house. But I did really, you know, try to explore and research the possibility of EMFs and how that impacts, you know, my family and the community. What I found out is it's inconclusive, right? And so what I'm seeing the parallel here is that we're not receiving any substantial evidence that goes one way or another. But even if that was the case, even if that was the case, FCC is the one that is the regulatory agency. So I am conflicted. There's no doubt in my mind. The information that all of you provided has really kinda muddied the water. And, but the logic here, and my responsibility, is to not expose the city to litigation, is to make sure that we follow the federal regulations. And that being the case, it's gonna be a very difficult decision for me, but that's where I stand. I stand right at the fence. So...
Mayor? So I got a question from Mr. Hobbs. Is there anything that was brought up during the comments tonight that you feel that need to be addressed?
No, I think we've addressed all of the issues with your discussions and my presentation, and I think we've covered all the matters. And, you know, I certainly appreciate the comments from the speakers, and they're very passionate, but we're just simply restricted under federal law. We simply cannot regulate on the basis of environmental impacts. And I get that that's troublesome and difficult, but the argument is being made to the wrong body. Needs to go to the FCC or Congress or something at a federal level. So I think that we've addressed everything tonight. I do wanna come back to your comments, Councilmember Detrick, about the rear yards. We're having a little struggle understanding what that is. We don't have to do that right now, but I wanna do that before the council takes action on, so we're clear on what you're talking about.
So, so there's pole lines that go through rear easements. Instead of being underground out on the street, sometimes there's pole lines that go in the rear easements of homes, especially in the older neighborhoods?
So maybe it might be helpful if, Mr. Oblak, if you might be able to pull up the diagram. I'm trying to understand where that might be.
We have the short line.
And Mr. Wilson and I have been...
It goes between us and the subdivision.
Well, while I was pulling it up, that begs another question. So...
If you pull up from your PowerPoint presentation, Antonio, the little map you had with the red and the green, I'm wondering if...
I could bring up the...
Oh, you got something better? Okay, got it.
I wanna ask a question about the existing poles in general, because, Mr. Hobbs, I thought we... you and I talked about this. So existing telephone poles, I had some concerns over them going on that, but that... I thought we said that that's not... it wouldn't... they would not be going on.
This would not provide for cell facilities on existing telephone poles. This proposal that you're doing, that you're being presented tonight, only goes with light poles.
Yeah, that's... that makes sense, yeah. And I mean, I brought... just so folks here, I mean, so they know, I brought that up, because there's some existing telephone poles that felt like should've been undergrounded a long time ago, and I would hate to see a small cell go on that, and then we wouldn't be able to underground it. So, anyway, so I don't know if that answers your question, Councilman Detrick, because it wouldn't go on existing telephone poles.
And that may. We have a diagram. Maybe, Mr. Oblak, we can maybe walk through the configurations. To get to Vice Mayor Hume's point, before we get to that, I think his suggestion is that the current code, a proposed code that hasn't been passed yet by the council, is that no small cell facilities would be immediately adjacent to front yards, which is why I think you were getting the answer from Mr. Oblak, that it would be essentially on the same street. We could add language, if it's the will of the council, to say that it cannot be immediately adjacent to a front yard, or immediately adjacent to or across the street from a front yard. I think that will address your concerns, Councilmember Hume. All right.
Yeah. That's good. Yeah, I support that.
And to follow up on the point, most of the rear yard easements are smud facilities. Those wouldn't be city facilities for street lighting. The one caveat I'd have for the rear yard adjacent, we do have a couple of different rear yard situations. One is what we call a through-lot situation. For example, on Bond Road, if you think of Bond Road, east of East Stockton Boulevard, some of those old county subdivisions have a rear lot that faces directly adjacent to the public sidewalk versus Laguna Boulevard on the west side, where you have a 25-foot landscape strip. We'd wanna know how you'd wanna address that if you're gonna address rear yard adjacencies, because a light pole in the what we call the through-lot situation would be approximately four or five feet from the rear fence, whereas on a Laguna Boulevard, that light pole would be somewhere between 25 and 30 feet from that rear fence.
So, if I can just dive in on... to answer that question, in my estimation, what you just described there with respect to Bond Road, it also exists on Elk Grove Florin Road, other major arterials throughout the city, that... those are the critical areas where you want coverage. But I don't think it has any material effect on the aesthetics for the homeowner, or the value of the home, because it's not something you see when you drive up to look at a home, consider whether to buy it. So I would not be comfortable with any prohibition for that type of adjacency.
Okay. Members? Do we have a consensus? Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah.
So do we have any alley situations that are affected like that?
Do we have city utilities in public alleys?
Probably in the Old Town area. I think we have city streetlights on some of those alleys, either side of Elk Grove Boulevard. That'd be the only thing I can recall. We might have a city streetlight in an alley, or adjacent to an alley, in a home.
Okay.
I guess it would depend on where does it sit in relation to the front, front of the house, front of a residential lot.
One other question relative to...
One other question relative to, so if the proposal is to put antennas on city-owned facilities, is there any proposals where they're using them on utility poles?
Under the current way we've structured the zoning code amendments and the MLA, if it was a smud facility, PG&E facility, WAPA facility, those would require conditional use permits. The administrative approval would only apply to facilities that are covered by the MLA between the city and the wireless carrier. Our code doesn't prohibit them from going on those facilities, but they need a full conditional use permit versus the administrative...
So they still would need to come to the city for approval on utility poles?
Yes, if they're not city facilities.
Okay. All right.
Right, anything else?
Mayor, do we want to pull the applicant back up to see if they're amenable to these...
Nope, take it or leave it.
Yeah, all right, I'm fine with that, too. Yeah, okay. Anything else?
Mayor, I move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution, a title only in ordinance finding that no further environmental review is required pursuant to State Sequel Guidelines Section 15183, 15301, and 15303 for the Singular Wireless PCS Code Amendment and approving amendments to the Elk Grove Municipal Code Title 23 zoning as described and shown in Exhibits A and B of the ordinance and modified from the DIAS this evening.
Got a motion, and before I ask for a second, Mr. Graham, I want to commit to you that per Mr. City Attorney's comments earlier, I'd be willing to work with you to lobby the right people in Congress. So, I hear you, and I think that, you know, again, you're talking to the wrong crew. So is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? All right.
Move motion number two to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion, got a first, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? All right, next item. Thank you, folks. Thank you, folks. I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
I guess item 9.4, which is two public hearings to consider, A, the 53rd annexation to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 for Maintenance Services, and B, 28th annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2.
Folks, could you please take it outside? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a long night.
Good evening.
I do have a brief presentation for item 9.4.
I'm willing to waive the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Karen.
Mayor Lope, you're open to public hearing and open the public comment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, I wanted to declare a public hearing open for CFD 2006-1. I want to open for a public comment. I do not believe there are any members of public sign up to speak. I want to close the public comment and declare a public hearing closed for 2006-1.
Move motion A1.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? Okay, tabulation, please.
Of 16 possible votes, 16 affirmative votes were cast, authorized in the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate of portion and describe the measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the elections available for council consideration.
I will move to adopt that resolution.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? All right, next item.
I'll move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution, a title only in ordinance levying and proportioning the special tax and territory annexed to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1, Maintenance Services Annexation Number 53, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Thank you.
Okay, see, I want to declare a public hearing open for SWDF Annex 28. Open public comment. I don't see members of public sign up to speak, so I want to go ahead and close public comment. We will have a public hearing for SWDF Annex 28 closed. Mr. Clerk, tabulation, please.
There is no majority protest of 16 possible votes weighted according to proportional financial obligation for each property. 16 affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment, the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining to levy assessments in the districts available for council consideration.
Okay.
Motion B.
All right, motion B. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? Did we vote on motion A3?
Give a motion, a second, if you just want to affirm for A3 on the ordinance, but you did read that into the record and had a motion in a second.
All right, okay, next item.
That vote right now, so if we can say...
Aye.
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 All in favor? And then for that, motion B, we'll just confirm that we have a motion in a second for adopting the motion B for the Stormwater District. And just hear the vote, all the affirmative votes?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
All right, okay, next time.
Let's take a Sonda item, or Section 10, our regular agenda items, action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is receive information regarding residential short-term rentals in the city of Elk Grove.
Thanks for waiting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Shane Giller with Development Services. This item is a presentation on the concept of short-term rentals and a request for a public policy direction. In the past year, 18 months or so, both the Elk Grove Police Department and code enforcement have begun to receive complaints regarded, regarding homes being used as what we call short-term rentals. Some of these complaints are related to large parties that cause disturbances, outdoor marijuana smoking, and suspicious behavior. Specifically, the police department and code enforcement have dealt with a shooting at a short-term rental, which did injure someone, a party that resulted in attendees fighting with officers, guest vehicles leaking oil onto the streets that were cited, and reckless driving to and from the rentals themselves. For some background, a short-term rental is a single-family home, apartment or condo that is rented for a very limited period of time, less than 30 days. Usually, they're rented for one or two days at a time, like a vacation rental. They're commonly known under the internet brand names of Airbnb, VRBO, and HomeAway. We are having a lot of trouble estimating exactly how many we have in the city of Elk Grove, but our estimates are that at most, we've been able to find 150, which is a relatively small amount of our overall housing stock at .001 percent. We do have some language in the zoning code that addresses residential uses that are similar or like short-term rentals. Specifically, we have a bed and breakfast in zoning definition, which requires a conditional use permit. One of the distinctions there is the offering that meals may be involved, and in your typical Airbnb situation, that's not often the case. We also have hotels and motels, which are prohibited in residential zones, and that's where you're renting five rooms or more for a less than 30-day stay, which can be argued some short-term rentals are doing. Staff does want to recommend that whatever option we land on this evening, we go back and do some cleanup of the definitions in the code. Specifically, we've identified some conflicts as we're reviewing this with our home occupation uses in Title 23, which where a boarding house, or not a boarding house, but a bed and breakfast requires a CUP in one area of the zoning code, it's a prohibited home occupation in another area of the zoning code. So we'd want to go through and clean up those definitions with whatever option we land on this evening. Option one that we're presenting to you this evening is basically to stay the course with what we have now, and to treat complaints against short-term rentals as they come in, and specific to what the complaint's related to, and apply existing law, either state law or local code, to whatever we're experiencing there, and not adopt any specific regulation to the land use of a short-term rental. The second option we're presenting would be to treat short-term rentals as a business function and to require a special business license for them, and then adopt some code language probably into Title 4. That would include some operational parameters and some standards that a short-term rental would have to operate by to keep the permit. This option may require additional staff time or resources, and we would bring an analysis of that back, should you decide on option two, when we would bring the code amendment for consideration. Option three would treat short-term rentals as a zoning issue or land use issue, and we would adopt a distinction between long-term rentals or traditional rental of a single-family home or apartment and short-term rental as a different type of land use. And then we would offer up to the Planning Commission through a zoning amendment or to the council eventually, the concept of using the land use table to either completely prohibit it altogether or in certain zones, or to place restrictions on short-term rentals through the use of either minor use permits or conditional use permits, which then it would work similar to the business license regulation model. There are some financial considerations that I've included in the staff report. The current language we have in the municipal code requires that short-term stays, short-term rentals, Airbnbs, do pay transient occupancy tax. Currently, there are only one or two that have contacted the city to pay that tax. Finance staff has looked at the rough estimates of what we think we have in town as far as short-term rentals go, and estimate that the loss of TOT revenue at this point could be as high as about $93,000 a year. On the upside, Airbnb, who we've talked to a few times while researching the staff report, does have a program where they would collect the TOT on behalf of the guests and for the hosts, and provide that directly to the city on a periodic basis, so that they are in compliance with our tax requirement there. A real quick snapshot of what other agencies in the region have done or are dealing with, you'll see that several agencies have no specific regulation, but the cities of Roseville and Rockland, Rockland recently had a shooting similar to ours at a house party in an Airbnb, have adopted some operational standards related to the limiting the number of days an Airbnb can be rented, or the number of guests that can be rented out to in order to sort of limit the scope of the activity. Rancho Cordova doesn't have any specific regulation, but does include them in their bed and breakfast zoning definition. And the city of Sacramento operates under a permit system where basically, bad behavior or bad acting by the short-term rental can have the permit revoked in the city of Sacramento. A quick summary of what we're looking for tonight is, obviously, that we're experiencing these issues and have brought this to you. We've identified these inconsistencies in the zoning code we'd like to clean up, and we'd appreciate some discussion and feedback on the three options that we presented tonight. With that, I know there's some public comment, and staff is available for questions.
I, too, have a question. I think you had stated earlier, there's estimated about 150, right, that...
On the high end, yes.
And then, are they registered with the special business license, or how did you find that number?
Staff, several of us spent time poking around the web, entering different search criteria, and landed on some search criteria arrives at 25 different rentals in the city, and some of the broader search criteria came up with about 150. The companies we've spoken to have not or would not provide any specific number of listings in the city, and would only give us some more generic information about the numbers of guest stays.
Okay, and then this question might be for the chief, but chief, is there any way we can find out how many calls have came through regarding issues with these short-term rentals?
I think so, as long as there was some notation in the call itself that would indicate that it was a short-term rental, we should be able to retrieve that information.
Great, thank you.
Shane, what would be the, in your opinion, what would be the most restrictive?
The most restrictive would probably be the zoning option, option three. The cost and process involved there is probably the thing that is the most restrictive for somebody to get through to then operate a short-term rental. And so, even if the restrictions placed on the operation in the end aren't terribly stringent, just the process to go through entitlements is something that would be a barrier to entry, I think, for many people interested in the short-term rental market.
What does, what do you think would be the easiest to control?
What do you think I need?
To administer and for the PD and code enforcement and everybody to manage, what would be the best option in your opinion?
I think honestly, landing on option three would give us the best tools. And I didn't pay, I didn't expect that they would respond like that. It would give us the best tools to address the situation and would ensure that, in fact, the applicants were serious about doing it as a business and doing it correctly, and that it was not just sort of a fast-money-making operation at the negative impact to neighbors.
Perfect.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I've got a follow-up question, then, Shane. So, if you did option three, would it align, or could it align with the city of Sacramento's, where essentially, your conditional use permit is your permit required, and then the revoking in denial?
It could, yes. The use of either the minor conditional or regular conditional use permit would allow us to adopt conditions that could be tailored to the specific location or proposed use, which is a little more pinpoint than a blanket business license regulation. And then, violation of those conditions would allow us to then proceed back to the Planning Commission or the zoning administrator, depending on the issuing authority, and present a argument for revocation.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? No? Thank you. All right, at this point, I want to open for public comment. We have a number of speakers signed up to speak. Manaz Zion, did I pronounce your name correctly? If not, please correct me when you come on up. And then Dennis Williams is after that.
Hi there, it's Manaz. So my family and I live directly across the street from an Airbnb short-term rental. Many of the complaints Shane has cited in his report were actually my complaints and my calls to Elk Grove Police and to code enforcement, and unfortunately, their hands have been tied. Living across this property has been a nightmare. This property is a four-bedroom house that's, has been illegally converted into a six-bedroom rental, which is essentially operating as a motel, renting each room out at $35 a night, cheaper than a motel six. We have dealt with suspicious people in our neighborhood throughout all hours of the day and night. These guests are using drugs outside of our homes, loitering, and last but not least, parking illegally throughout our neighborhood, blocking driveways, spilling oil throughout the streets. I urge you, the city council, to adopt Shane's third option to help put an end to these properties and to prevent these problematic rental properties from continuing and growing in numbers. I wanted to remind you, these types of properties are essentially functioning as motels, which our residential neighborhoods are not zoned for. Our neighborhoods cannot accommodate for motel parking, hire security to watch over these properties, and these properties do not pay taxes, which essentially is lost revenue for our city. Once again, I urge you to go with Shane's most restrictive recommendation to help maintain a good quality of life for Elk Grove residents.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dennis Williams. Hello, Mr. Williams, is Ubaid Zion.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Williams. I am a resident here. An Airbnb moved into my, as my neighbor, my, you know, eight feet off my home. This happened just last week, and I have called the police four different times, four days. Out of the six that they were operating, they broke the law. They have behaviors that I would, I don't want my children in the neighborhood to see. I am here to talk about this, and I also support Shane's number three, and I want to eliminate these businesses from our town. They're stealing from our hotels, which also provides you with money, our city with money. They're harassing me, and their behavior is so poor that I'm afraid that I don't want my children or my neighbors' children to see this. The other thing is that the police have to come out to this houses at night from my calls, from their parties that they're having past our curfew, and they keep me awake until 1 o'clock, 1:30 in the night. I have cancer, I don't sleep real well in any way. The police come, tell them to cut it out, tell them to stop, the police leave, and they're right back at it again. These people, the one that I'm talking about, the people that own the property... These people, the one that I'm talking about, the people that own the property live in the Bay Area, there's no owner on the property when these people enter their house, this house. And this business is a plague to our city. This business should not be in any neighborhood. This business needs not to be here. We caused the police six times, they came out last week, two officers came, whatever that costs, they have two vehicles sometimes come out there, two officers to come out there, and we're paying their salary, their car, their insurance, their retirement, for these people who come and make all this chaos and degrade our lifestyle in a residential area. This is like having an open sign that says "bar open." Bar open in a residential neighborhood. Now, that doesn't make any sense to me. It doesn't make any sense to the police department. It doesn't make any sense to you. So I want to get rid of these things. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. This man is doing a great job, and thank you for letting me speak here. I mean, I hope, I hope that you can understand that this is a pariah in our town.
We hear you, thank you.
I thank you so much for listening to me, and I'd like to talk to you someday.
All right, our next, our next speaker is Ubaid Zion. Then following Ubaid is Dan Gonzalez.
Hello, my name is Ubaid Zion. As my wife came up here and spoke to you guys, we live directly across from the Airbnb. It has been a complete nightmare for us. We, this, the owners of the home moved away one night in December, just next day they were gone. Renters moved in, they converted the entire property, it was four bedrooms into six bedrooms. They were living on site and then renting out the rest of the rooms. They recently moved out, and they still continue, they've now converted the master into an Airbnb. So they rent every room in the house individually. If you go on Airbnb's app and you look up the actual listing, it shows it's tied to a host. If you look at that host, it shows you all of their listings. They have fourteen rooms between Elk Grove and Stockton that they rent out. So I feel like if Elk Grove doesn't get ahead of this, we have new homes, new developments being put up every day. People from all over can come over, they can buy the properties, rent the properties, and just rent the rooms out individually and make a large profit for themselves. This takes away from families moving into secure communities. This takes away from homes being available for families that want to raise their children in Elk Grove, that want, you know, utilize the Elk Grove School District. Elk Grove is a great town for families, it's a family-oriented town. That's why my wife and I live here, you know, we're raising our kids here. We have friends that live here, and, you know, it's a great city and we want to keep it that way. So if you could please help regulate this and make it, you know, a better place and a safer place for families to be and make sure that Elk Grove stays family-oriented, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. Next speaker is Dan Gonzalez. Dan Gonzalez, following Dan Gonzalez is Daniel Rodriguez.
Gonzalez. Oh, yeah. Thank you. It's interesting that such a small number of homes, the gentleman said, at most a hundred and fifty, are causing such havoc in our town. I mean, think about it, a hundred and fifty, no more than a hundred and fifty are causing that kind of problem. That's a definite problem and a nuisance to the neighbors that they're in. I definitely support item number three, suggest number three. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Daniel Rodriguez, our next speaker. Following Daniel Rodriguez is Sarah Gallegos.
All right, so I'm Danny Rodriguez, and I am fully supporting option number three, if you will. It's, right now it's only a hundred and fifty. We have a casino coming up, that number could go up, so might as well regulate it. I live in Laguna West, but HOA does a great job there of regulating there, like, we had an Airbnb, they threw a party, they threw trash in the lake, that got stopped. Our HOA could do it, or HOA could do it, you guys could do it too. So, you know, please support number three, you know, it's going to help Elk Grove, it's going to help Elk Grove now, it's going to help Elk Grove in the future when we get the casino, because it's going to be a bigger problem later, so might as well just address it now. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sarah Gallegos. Following Sarah Gallegos is Ashley Kinstall.
Hello, I'm going to keep this very brief because I would like to sleep tonight, but I also agree with all the public comments and go with option number three.
Okay, thank you. Ashley Kinstall, following Ashley is Randy Becker.
Thank you guys so much for staying, we really appreciate it. I just took a few, some notes on my cell phone during the past four hours. Okay, so many of us purchased and actually built our homes in a specific neighborhood that we're speaking about five years ago. That's why we got the crew here representing. We're all, we chose our neighborhood because we want a place to raise our kids safely. At the time when my husband and I built, we were not pregnant, now we have a nineteen-month-old son. What concerns me is the fact that we have people coming in and out of our neighborhood who cannot follow the rules of society, much less their own families, and that is why they're staying at thirty-five-dollar-a-night hotels, or, you know, rentals, Airbnb, whatever is happening in our neighborhood. I say that as a social worker, I say that with, you know, the most like kindness of my heart. I've worked with all these populations, but when they're in my neighborhood and they're causing issues, and I don't know if there's a sex offender in the home, and that's a huge concern for me. So also, you know, we talked about the cell phone towers and how some of those things are aesthetically unpleasant, just keep in mind what we see daily in our neighborhood. We see cars filled with possessions and, you know, dirty, they're disgusting, they're leaking oil all over the place, and then we have the behavior of everybody. Also, well, I think I hit it all. Anyway, I just urge you to please vote on option three, that will really help us keep our neighborhood safe. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Randy Becker. Mr. Becker, come on up. Following Randy Becker is Kevin Gainsley.
Airbnbs can be a good option for community. I've stayed twice in Airbnbs in different towns. As professionals and people that want to leave the community they visited better than they came in, that's not what we're talking about this evening from listening to the residents. Other cities like Tahoe have serious issues like they've been talking. I think the number three option is where we need to go with this. I would also suggest that since this is a business, it needs to be a business license. The residence needs to be aware that this is an Airbnb or a rental, a daily rental. Also, I work for a company that at one time, when we had summer fires, if we got more than one or two fires, fire department that roll in, we would get fined for those fires. Now, we're talking about police and the cost of police, maybe it's time to ratchet something up that if the police rolls in on this residence more than once or twice on an issue, maybe the resident or the owner should be fined, or maybe there should be some strict language that's tapping into our resources that we're paying for, especially if it's an owner that lives out of town or out of the area. Somebody should pay for it, not us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Kevin Gainsley, following Kevin Gainsley is Constance Connolly.
Mr. Mayor, council members, know quite a few of you, grew up in this town, been here over fifty years. There's plenty of places to party. We used to use the Thornton Hall, we used to use the hall on Grove Street. There's plenty of places, there's plenty of places to stay, there's hotels now, there's long-term hotels, there's short-term hotels. We don't need an Airbnb in our neighborhoods. There's no, there's no reason. I use Airbnb when I go to Hawaii, it's on the beach. There's a reason for having Airbnbs. Elk Grove in a little tiny residential area is not a place for an Airbnb. So I strongly suggest option three as the most restrictive that you can make it so that it is painful to have an Airbnb in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for staying up so late.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Constance Connolly.
I'm tired, and, you know, we used to stay here till two o'clock in the morning back in the, in the day, so I guess maybe this is still early. I've been, I emailed Shane, and we've been working on this for a couple of years, and I haven't emailed in a while, but I need to because wedding season was just about crazy. There is a house, and I live in the rural area, so that means we got two and a half acres of land, and there's a house that's two streets up from me. They rent their house out for big parties, and I don't know if Shane recalls, but I said, do they ever, do you have to permit to do that? Because these parties go on forever, and if you ever lived in the rural area, you know that sound travels. I mean, and you can pack a lot of people in a couple of acres, let me tell you. So I don't know if this issue, it can be resolved, what is before you tonight, or if it has to be something else, I don't want it to be dragged on, but I just want you to be aware that, you know how we are in the rural area, we like our peace and quiet, and I am telling you, every weekend during wedding season, it was a nightmare. So if it can be, you know, grandfathered in, or however you work it, I don't want, you know, to take up any more time, but I just would like you to be aware that that's occurring.
Thank you, ma'am, and that is our final speaker, so I want to close public comment. Council of Abortion and Action.
I'd like to speak, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I want to thank everybody for coming out. When I first noticed, I had two Airbnbs right down the street, three doors down from where I live, and saw that we had different cars, different families coming in every weekend. It was a concern for me, and I have little kids. When I started getting emails from folks in my district saying that there was an Airbnb party that happened, and they called the Elk Grove Police Department, but I realized that this was getting out of control, so I did contact Mr. Diller, and he looked into it, and he mentioned that there are a hundred and fifty, there probably are more, and I think the majority of them are in our district where Mr. Williams and I live, and that I asked the council if we could put this on the agenda to discuss, because while we are a small, family-oriented neighborhood, because we now have the aquatic center and the casino, and as we grow, we will become almost like a destination city, and I do want to get this under control. So I want to thank you for coming out, because I wasn't sure when I asked for this, if anybody was going to come out, and I know it's a problem, but I needed our community to come out and voice and share the stories that they did so that we can put some restrictions on this. I like option three, I also would like to include that we limit the number of guests, because not too long ago, the house that was right down the street from me had a fraternity party, there were five cars parked there, and a couple of days after that, they had a sorority party, and so it's uncontrollable, I understand that, I get that, I get to see that almost all the time in my neighborhood. So thank you for coming out, I hope we can get support on this. I'd like to support option three, but also tee it out a little bit more in limiting the number of guests. I would even go as far as saying if we could limit the amount of these in our city and bringing them back for a renewal every year. And I like the, having to be able to revoke it if there continues to be issues within these homes. Thank you.
Councilman Detrick.
Yeah, this is definitely, it's a quality of life issue, and when, no other person should affect another person's quality of life. So I definitely, thank you all for being out, it's almost eleven o'clock, geez, I have to be up at four, so. I support option three, I also support bad behavior, revoke those permits, and then if there's a way with the city attorney and the police department, if we can figure out a way to start billing people for services for abuse, I'm willing to tack those fees on too.
We can look into that. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so I want to thank, I guess, Councilmember Wynn and Shane for bringing this to my attention. I had no idea this was even a problem in the city. I live in a neighborhood that's pretty stable and is all owner-occupied, and, you know, the shame of it is that VRBO or Airbnb, I mean, it has its place as a lodging option, but even when you go to places like Hawaii, San Diego, Tahoe, places that are destinations, you see signs in people's yards that say neighborhoods are for neighbors, not for vacation rentals. And so even when they're truly being used for their intended purpose and not abused, which I think is the case of what your experiences have been, they still cause disruption or don't, don't have that fabric of a neighborhood. So I'm all for regulating them as much as we can. Rather than limiting the number of guests, though, this is the first time I've ever heard that they're actually renting them out room by room. That is absolutely atrocious, the idea that that's occurring. And so that ought to be forbidden in the strongest language possible, and however we get there, that that is not allowed in any circumstance.
Councilmember, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think we're just trying to go as long as possible to keep our police chief here, since this is last meeting. But
I think it's a reason he wants to leave.
We haven't gone this late in a long time, but I also want to echo sentiments of my colleagues, and thank you all for staying, it's obviously a very important issue for you and the city. I will agree with everything my council colleagues just said, except I want to have a conversation about limiting the number, only because, you know, my son had, you know, he's all across country, but there's instances where I've seen some of the boys and their fathers, they had a meet, and so they stayed at a house, so they used, I mean, it wasn't abused, but there's certainly, I mean, I think, you know, I don't remember how many, but my point is there, there, sometimes there's, or maybe it's a family reunion somewhere. So if you, I, my only concern is if you, if you limit it, how would we limit it, I guess, is it just if you have a four-bedroom, you only sent, you assume two people per bedroom or something like that? Because if we, you know, when there is legitimate uses, that's the only thing I'd be worried about. But everything else, I think
I think there's already some standards in the codes for number of occupants in a
So like the city of Roseville and the city of Rockland limits the number of guests to six.
Right.
So I, I mean, I
So, yeah, so if you have a family, so let's say, you know, I was in, I had a family wedding reunion in Australia where we, my cousins and I, we rented a house, so there was, there was definitely more than six, and, but I just, you know, how do you, how do you, how do you control that?
I don't know that you're going to find a one-size-fits-all solution at eleven o'clock at night on a Wednesday. Shane, I think has a pretty good idea of what we want, which is to allow responsible use by responsible users and responsible owners and disallow the abuse that's going on.
Yeah, that's, if we could get to that without, I mean, I'm just, I'd like to try that without actually a number limit, if that'd be all right, within reason, of course.
I think you have enough. I support three, and if you can make it more restrictive, let's do it, because, you know, I just, just begin to imagine how horrible it is to have a party next door and, you know, trying to get some sleep or what have you. But, you know, again, thank you, Councilmember Wynn, for bringing this up, because I really didn't realize that this was an issue in Elk Grove, so thank you all for coming out tonight.
Hey, Mayor, on a side note to this, I've been involved with some of these rentals, and the problem is, I, you know, sometimes I go, what kind of people are renting that? Well, this may be a doctor or an attorney, it doesn't mean that, or, you know, professional people, but they're here, they're on vacation, they're here to party, so it So, it, it, it's not an environment that's conducive to a neighborhood where people, you know, that's where they live, sleep, have to go to work the next day. Speaking of, we need to get out of here pretty quick.
Yeah, agreed, yeah.
Okay. All right. Take care, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
All right, you have enough, Shane?
I think so. I think the city attorney's gonna, no, no, go ahead.
No, I was gonna do the, I'm moving to the next one.
Oh, you're moving to the next one? Yeah, no, I think we've got enough. We, Development Services will work with legal and PD, and we'll get something to the Planning Commission as soon as we can.
Shane, that's why he makes the big bucks.
I'm trying to get you out of here. All right, next item.
Just a note, item 10-2 is moving to the September 11th, 2019, regular agenda. So, that takes us to 10-3, consider a resolution of the city council declaring the intent to transition by district, district-based elections.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm still your city attorney, John Hobbs. I have a very quick presentation, it's about five slides. Do you want to wave it? Okay, we'll hear it. So, this is a Voting Rights Act, district-based elections. There's an item on your agenda for tonight's meeting to consider whether or not to move to a district-based election method. I know some of you are, or all of you are very familiar with this. I'll just hit some of the high points for your benefit, for the benefit of the audience still here and anyone who might be watching elsewhere. So, there are a couple of different election methods that we can implement under California law. There's the from-district method, which is what we operate under now. Council candidates must live in a specified district, but they're elected from the, from the entire city at large. There's a by-district election method, which is also referred to under the Voting Rights Act as district-based. What this is, is council candidates must live in a specified district. They are elected only by the voters of that district. Under either method, cities may have an elected mayor directly elected by the people. What we have in Elk Grove is a from-district method with a directly elected mayor. We have four districts. Each council member runs in that district and is elected by the city voters at large, as is the mayor. The Elk Grove method is considered at-large under the Califor, California Voting Act, excuse me, California Voting Rights Act, even though we have districts, because the elections are done by the community at large and not limited to the district's residents themselves, it's considered an at-large method. The California Voting Rights Act prohibits at-large methods that result in racially polarized voting. Now, as noted in the staff report, there's been no finding of racially polarized voting. There's just been no determination on that at this point, whether it be for any type of minority class. But what racially polarized voting is, is a voting method that dilutes the votes of a racial minority and prevents those groups from selecting the candidate of their choice. There is no requirement in order to prove racially polarized voting to show a discriminatory intent. The way these are proven is by very, very detailed demographic and statistical analyses. So, whether there's an intent on the council or the city or anyone to discriminate, which I'm not suggesting there is by anyone, and I know there's not, that's not a required element of these claims. It's, it's, it's basically a math analysis. We received a letter on July 15th from a law firm of Schenkman and Hughes. This is a law firm who has been going up and down the state and having some success in suing cities for Voting Rights Act violations. The author of the letter, a gentleman named Kevin Hughes, excuse me, Kevin, Kevin Schenkman, claims that the city's method currently violates the California Voting Rights Act. His clients are the Southwest Registration Education Project, which appears to be a nonprofit organization, as well as Elk Grove resident Andres Ramos. The claim in the letter is that the method of election under the city's method results in a dilution of the Latino vote and prevents the Latinos from being able to get candidates of their choice on the city council. Now that we have received the letter, the city council now has an option, within forty-five days of receiving the letter, to pass the proposed resolution that's on the agenda for tonight. What the resolution would do is a resolution of intent to transition to a by-district method of election. It's non-binding. The city council doesn't make a final determination tonight. This is just the first step towards moving to a by-district election process. This would start, if the council passes a resolution, this would start the public hearing process and the public meeting process. The upside to passing such a resolution is the prospective plaintiffs who sent the letter, the attorney sent the letter on their behalf, they would be precluded from filing a lawsuit against the city for a period of ninety days, while the city council considers and moves towards a by-district form of election process. That timeframe could be extended by ninety days by an agreement with the prospective plaintiffs, but the law requires that if we're going to move by district, we move very quickly, or else we can be exposed to the possibility of expensive litigation. And the passage of the resolution tonight, if the council does that, allows the city to start moving towards that process in a bit of a more deliberate fashion with, with the litigation being stayed. Now, that forty-five-day period expires tomorrow on the 29th, so it's important, if the council wants to take that action, that we do that tonight. If approved, as I mentioned, the city staff would start the hearing process. You would probably have a matter on your council agenda for the foreseeable future in light of the short timeframe. The city would also retain a professional demographer. The cost of that should be no more than about forty thousand dollars. We would need the help of a professional demographer to assist with the drawing of the maps, to make sure that we are doing it consistent with the Voting Rights Act. The initial look that the demographer would do is the existing maps that we have right now, the existing districts. He would take those, take a look at those, and that would be the starting point. Unless council directs otherwise, you can certainly direct otherwise, but that would be the typical starting point. Those might be fine. But through this process, you will be presented either by members of the public or from staff or the professional demographer, other potential maps moving towards this process. If the city ultimately adopts the ordinance within the ninety-day period or any extension of that, the city would be exposed to reimbursing the potential plaintiffs their costs up to thirty thousand dollars. That would be subject to documentation presented by the potential plaintiffs, which we do not yet have, but I suspect that they would attempt to recover those funds. So, if you move towards this process, you can assume that you can be exposed to an additional cost of up to thirty thousand dollars. That's my presentation. I did see that we have an email from Amar Shergill, who I see is here tonight. I didn't think he was going to make it based on the email. I spoke with him briefly before this matter about the two points that I was going to raise that were noted in his email. One question, or one point, is his email mentions that there's a lawsuit pending against the city. He acknowledged that was just an oversight. There is no lawsuit pending against the city right now on this. There could be one filed in the future, depending on what we end up doing, but there's currently no lawsuit pending against the city. So, I just wanted to clarify that, and Mr. Shergill, I think, will probably confirm that if he chooses to speak. The other point that he raises in his letters, he asks how much money has been spent on attorneys to defend the current system. The city, the city attorney's office has not hired any outside counsel to defend the system, to do anything with respect to legal expenses. I've spent my time on it, and the lawyers in my office have spent time on that. So, there is certainly a cost to that. That's in-house salaries that are paid. We have not spent, spent money on outside attorneys with respect to this matter. So, without the staff report, lays this out in a little bit more detail. Staff's recommendation is that you pass a resolution of intent so that we can at least buy some time to look at whether or not the city council ultimately wants to move to a by-district approach. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
No question. Mr. Hobbs, I did have a question because a member of the community did send me an email. In terms of the demographer, are we required to have a demographer? We already have district lines.
So, you are not required by law to have a demographer. However, it is standard and typical practice, and my strong recommendation that we retain a demographer because frankly, no one on staff, myself included, is qualified to do these types of analyses. It's very technical, statistical analyses, and demographers are basically statisticians. I know it's thirty thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars, I guess I mentioned, and I, and I realize that that's real money. But in order to do this in a meaningful way, I strongly recommend that we proceed with that. We have not yet signed the contract for the demographer. We were waiting for this hearing tonight. It is within the city manager's authority to do that. He has, he has authority up to fifty thousand dollars. But my strong recommendation is that we proceed with a professional demographer to get some assistance on this in areas that might be a bit foreign to some of us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. At this point, want to open for public comment. I have one member of the public sign up to speak, Mr. Amar Shergill. Come on up.
Long time no see.
It's, it's been a little bit. Council, thank you for taking time on this. Today, I come to you from a vigil where a sick grandfather in Tracy was murdered, knife to death. So, I'm in no mood for racism, institutional or otherwise, tonight. Elk Grove has been engaging in institutional racism for quite some time. California Assembly says we are. They say that racially polarized voting is institutional racism. That's why they devoted a civil rights act to it, and we are civil rights violators. And as I said over a year ago, the numbers in Elk Grove are slam dunk on racially polarized voting. There's an area of town which votes for Trump, that area votes less for people of color. Doesn't matter why they do it, that's just the way they do it. So, we're civil rights violators. In a small town, councils like yours, for many years, here and others, have thought, you know, they're doing the right thing, they're just protecting the community, whether it's redlining, whether it's title restrictions that target racial minorities. Councils like this often think we're doing the right thing. And I appreciate Mayor Lee, who has come out for by-district voting for many years. But I don't know why we're waiting now to do this survey. You all have it within your authority to set up the hearings, but also to say right now, for 2020, we are going to by-district elections because that's the right thing to do, and we're not going to be civil rights violators anymore. Delay is more institutional racism. Today, in your resolution, you can say, "2020, we're going to by-district." We're going to figure out what it's going to look like, but we're actually going to do that. Now, I know you don't think you engage in institutional racism, but that's what we have here in front of us. I want, I want to take the rest of my time here, a minute, for you to consider, on the issue of institutional racism, that we have in this town, a planning commission with no people of color. For over a year, I've been telling you about this. I've been telling you for a year, we have a planning commission with no people of color in a town which is majority people of color. And you sit here and say, "We're going to delay by-district, maybe 2022, maybe 2024." I want to hear from you tonight, that you're going to do it right away. You're not going to be civil rights violators. Let's take the next thirty seconds to consider our planning commission, which has no people That's something within your power, a planning commission, did nothing for a year. And thank Mayor Lee, he wanted to do the right thing.
I have a question for you. Yes. For you. So, with the 2020 census coming out next year, would you support doing it once and doing it right, and having the census of 2020 be the district, redistricting after that census is done, instead of pushing this forward and doing it twice?
The time for justice is always right now. You've been violating civil rights for many years.
That's your opinion.
Let me answer, please. I, I let you put out your question. May I now answer? You've been violating civil rights for many years, and we've been asking you not to do that. So, what I'd say is, not only are you asking the wrong question, you are actually going to save money by going to by-district. You save money because you have a smaller election, it costs less, you pay the county less. CSD did the analysis, they said they save, well, fifty grand every year. So, you're actually spending extra money to be a civil rights violator. So, yeah, 2020, let's do it, and then we'll do the census, then we'll analyze it again, and then we'll fix it in 2022. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. You're entitled to your opinion. I don't agree, but you're entitled to your opinion.
Yeah, I've made my opinion very clear.
I've made mine, too.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Seeing that there are no additional members of the community sign up to speak, want to close the public comment. Council deliberation and direction.
I have a question. Andre Ambrose is in the audience. Would you want to come up here and speak?
Mr. Coler, I have one thing.
So, so I have the question for you as well, Andre. Since you're a party to this, what is your opinion on doing the, doing it once and doing it right?
I do want to be limited in my comments, given that there's the possibility of litigation, and I would be a plaintiff in the, in the suit. But on the specific question about doing it right, as you say, the one thing I'll note is that we already have districts that were drawn using the 2010 census data in 2011, in compliance with all the requirements that any district needs to be drawn with, to be compliant with the Federal Voting Rights Act, with constitutional requirements. So, our maps are already compliant. Really, the difference is going just to the manner in which you have the election. You don't have to do what CSD did, which is create maps from scratch to begin with. You already have the maps. And so, there has been some discussion that I've heard, and this came up during the campaign, about, you know, why, let's wait until 2022 because let's do it with the 2020 census data. But really, look at any district throughout the country. All the congressional districts, every assembly district, every state senate district, every supervisory district was drawn in 2011 using 2010 data. They're all totally compliant, even though the numbers are based off of 2010 census. So, I do understand that maybe there's a desire to want to do 2022, but there is absolutely no legal impediment to going immediately in 2020 using maps that were drawn in 2011, checking every box that is legally required, because our current council district maps are totally compliant, just as every other district-based election is, because every other district in the country uses maps that were drawn in 2011 using 2010 data. So, that's why I just really, I just want to push back on that argument. There really is no, no reason to not immediately move to 2020. And I believe doing this process, I don't believe, and, I don't know, I don't believe that there is an option to hold off. I think when you proceed under the safe harbor process under the CVRA, it's for immediate implementation, not holding off until 2022. So, I would say it makes sense to move to 2020. If, if you were like the CSD and didn't have any, any districts at all, then maybe that would be a different argument, and still, again, not even sure the CVRA would allow for the delay. But Elk Grove isn't even in that situation. There are already good maps in place that are legally compliant, so it's a simple question, just change the manner of election.
I'd have to defer to our city attorney to see if the current districts are in compliance, because I know there's been huge growth areas in some areas. So, the, the number of people would not be the same. The boundaries would be redrawn based on the, the modification. So, I don't know whether there, you would use some other model. John, could you address that?
Yeah, the short answer is, at this point, we're not sure. The, the district maps in place right now would be the starting point. They may be the ending point, but that's why we want to hire a professional demographer to assist us with that. There have been changes in the city, significant changes, significant population changes since those were drawn and since the last census data. So, I feel if we, if we're going to go through this process, I feel strongly that we need to relook at that, as opposed to simply just accepting the, the current districts without looking at it. They may be fine, but we haven't gone through that analysis yet.
Okay. And if I could say, I think every other district, for example, our congressional district, our assembly district, they all similarly have experienced changes since 2010. But we don't see districts get struck down throughout the country and have to do redistricting every election cycle because there are population changes every election cycle. And, and then the last thing I'll note is, the CSD and drawing their maps now, because they did decide to go immediately to 2020 and not wait until the census, they're actually drawing them using the 2010 data because even the law requires them to, even though there is more recent American community survey data that's available. So, I'm not even sure that you could use that, because as I understand, the CSD was told, you can't use more recent data. By law, you must use the 2010 census. And again, Elk Grove isn't in that situation because we already drew maps using the 2010 census data. So, theoretically, they should be, though I certainly recognize the importance of having folks review it and make sure that it's all good. I would expect that it still would be, given that every other district in the country was drawn that way, and we're still using them for 2020.
But, but I also believe, I'd have to defer to John as well, that the, I think the, the ball's been put under our court, but with you being part of the lawsuit, with the attorney that's representing you, there's been a lawsuit filed. So, I think that there's an, there's always an option to stay something. That might not be the right legal term, but in essence, if there was an agreement that you go, "Look, we're proceeding, we, we want to go down this road, but we just want to do it once and do it right," you know, and that it, it could be moved to 2022 election using the 2020 census.
I, I appreciate that. I think this is actually the second letter that was sent. As you'll recall, the first letter before I was involved was sent, I believe, February of last year. Perhaps Mr. Schenkman would have been amenable to waiting until the next cycle instead of 2018. of 2018. But I think this council decided not to act at that time, and at this point, my personal perspective is, there's no need for further delay. You had an opportunity for delay, and you decided to delay, and so 2020 is what you got to delay it to. And so we will insist on our rights under the law. But I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks for coming up here.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Members? You good? Want to share your motion? Your motion? I'll go ahead and jump in.
I'll make it.
Mayor's privilege. I'll go ahead and move this item.
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Pose? Extension? Okay, thank you. Next item.
That takes us to item 10.4, which is designation of voting delegate and alternates to the 2019 League of Cities, California Cities Annual Conference down in Long Beach this year. I believe it's around the October 16th to 18th timeframe.
Who's going on the council?
You have a smile, so you're going?
I need to check some things.
Stephanie, I think you went last time, huh?
The last one, yeah.
Oh, okay. So.
I'd be willing to as well, too. I do have to check a couple of things. I was at the last one. I do serve on the League of Cities.
So can we do tentative, you're the alternate? You guys all have vice mayor, council-
A mayor?
Yeah, we'll see. Okay, let me check. Thank you.
All right, do we need a vote on this, Jason?
No, just the direction. Just designate them and take care of the rest.
Okay, all right.
You guys have been voluntold.
Great. Thank you, everyone. I want to adjourn this meeting at 11:22 PM.